Good evening. Today is Wednesday, November 30th, and a special board meeting of Salem Kaiser Public Schools is called to order. First, we'll take attendance. Our first vice chair, Director Inohos Pressi, will be absent today. I believe everybody else is present, and welcome to our brand-new board member, Robert Salazar, for your first full meeting. Next, we'll do our land acknowledgement. We are gathered today on the land of the Kalapuya. We are represented by the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ron and the Confederated Tribes of the Soletz Indians. The relationship between the Kalapuya people and this land continues unbroken to this day. And we offer gratitude for the land and for the generations present and past who have stewarded the land since time immemorial. We respectfully acknowledge and honor past, present, and future Native American and Indigenous students and staff of Salem Kaiser Public Schools. We invite you to join us in honoring these ancestral grounds and celebrating the resilience and strength of all Native American and Indigenous people. Okay, next. Oh, you know what? I failed to mention... Oh, nope, Director Guzman Ortiz is here. I know she was running a tiny bit late, so I just want to make sure attendance was clear. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance. You could please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. I do not think there are any agenda modifications this evening, and so we will now move forward to number two on our agenda, which is the overview of the superintendent hiring process and profile. And we are joined tonight by Hank Harris and Kathleen Rodden-Nord, and right now, I'll just turn it over to Hank to lead us through.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Chair, and hello, Board. Good to see you this evening. So with respect to the overview of the superintendent hiring process, we're at an exciting moment in the process. We're moving from the initial phase, which we call the engagement phase, into the recruitment phase, which is kind of how it sounds. It's the recruitment. So let me sort of talk a little bit about where we've been and where we are tonight, and then what happens next. So over the last several weeks, couple of months, in fact, we have gotten to know your community and your school district as deeply as well as we possibly could. Kathleen, my partner here, was our engagement lead and met with well over 100 community stakeholders. And when I use the word stakeholder, I want to be clear, I mean anybody who has any investment in the school district, whether that is a parent, a community member, a staff person, a student, most importantly. Beyond that, we reached out through other means and engaged with well over, well over 1,000. I think our last calculation was over 1,300 individuals informed that engagement process. So some of them engaged directly with myself or Kathleen, some of them engaged directly with our community liaisons, your community liaisons, I should say. Some, many engaged through the online survey. And we learned a lot about where Salem Kaiser is at this moment in time. And we asked in all of those forums, we focused really on three questions. We focused on what is going really well in the school district? What are people proud of? That's the first question. We asked that in various ways, but it's really getting to the heart of what is great about the Salem Kaiser School District. And the next question that we moved to is what will the new superintendent face when they join your community, your school district in July of 2023? What are the challenges? Every school district has them. What are the challenges in Salem Kaiser? What will be, this is all versions of that same question, what will be in their proverbial inbox that they will need to attend to on day one, or day 100, or year one, or year two, or year three? So that's the, I often call that, what's the complexities? So we started with what's great, we moved to what's complexity, what are the complexities? And the third question we ask, and we ask this to people who are not sitting on the school board, we say, if you were sitting on the school board, what would you be looking for in terms of the profile of a candidate, in terms of the qualities and characteristics and experiences that person brings? And when we sort of try to explain what we mean by that, I will often say, you know, we're looking for the professional experiences or what you would see in a resume, and the qualities or attributes are the things that you would encounter as you got to work with this person. So we want both. What are those qualities, characteristics, experiences, maybe three things? That's the third question. Let me just quickly repeat them again, because that's salient for the work that we're doing tonight. What's great? What are the challenges? And what are the qualities that people would want the school board to be facing? Tonight, we're going to focus on a document that speaks to that third question. What are the qualities and characteristics? We're going to get to that just in a moment, because that's where you're going to take action on tonight, Board. But I want to first speak to those first two questions. What's great and what are the complexities? And I want to tell you kind of what we learned from engaging with 1,300 folks. As you can imagine, 1,300 individuals have a variety of things that they are proud of, that they see as challenges. Everybody comes at it with a different lens. And so we spent a considerable amount of time engaging and then a considerable amount of time analyzing and making sense of all that input we had. And so I want to speak to five or six of kind of the strengths and challenges that rose to the top. As people say, these are, when we look at the collective wisdom of your community, what did we learn? I believe there's a slide to that effect. And I don't know if I will see the slide as I'm going through this, or how that works. Chair, will we see that on the screen, or should I just assume it's there in public space?
Usually, someone will pull it up on the screen. Do you want, Kristy, do you want me to do that?
Let me go find it quick. It's in the supplemental.
Okay.
Did I, I might be jumping ahead, Superintendent Perry. Am I? Because I'm looking at that as maybe item number four below.
No, this is the one that you did, you did an overview of the strengths and challenges. Is that the one you're looking for right now?
Yep. I know.
Let me look.
Do you want me to start talking about the first one while you're looking? Okay, I can do that. So the first strength that was, and these are not necessarily in exact order, but there is some, there is some sequence to the prolificness of kind of what we heard. The first strength I want to speak to is the incredible diversity of Salem Kaiser. This is seen as a great strength. Forty thousand students, 58%, 58%, 58% of them identifying as ethnically, racially, or linguistically diverse. Just going to pause. I think it's a bullet point sheet that starts with, at least my version.
I think it's a document that is called Salem Kaiser Public Schools Engagement.
I'm going to ask Alice for it. She'll know exactly where it is.
She will.
So I'll just say a little bit more about the diversity and the source of pride that the community has around us in nearly every engagement group. And many survey respondents spoke to this as being something that was deep and rich and valuable and fostered a greater understanding and enjoyment of different cultures. This diversity extends to broader communities. Respondents noted connections created by sharing of traditions, music, art, languages, food, cultures, and also the diversity around linguistically diverse members of the community. LGBTQ+ and BIPOC students described feeling seen and heard by district leadership and Board.
Hank, is it called engagement findings?
I believe so.
Okay, I can share it now. Thank you. I'm sorry, it's like my whole version of Word, but at least.
Yeah, that looks great.
Can see it, okay.
So as you see, so we're going to walk through six strengths. And the next one I want to speak about is the abundant programs and services to support student needs. And we heard a lot of, and you know, this is sometimes a very complex area, but I would also say in other districts, we are, we sometimes hear more of that this not being a strength than another district, because it's a, it's a complex arena. And that's not to say we didn't hear any concerns or frustrations, but in general, the community saw this as a strength and a source of pride. MTSS and after-school tutoring and migrant ed programs, and the Unified Program, and the ELL programs, and the Newcomer Center, and the community school outreach coordinators. There's a lot to be proud of in Salem Kaiser, and a clearly, not only source of pride, but certainly something that folks want their new superintendent to attend to and make sure is ably stewarded and perhaps enhanced, but certainly a recognition of this being a real, a real strong suit of Salem Kaiser. A lot of talk about how great the dual-language program is and excitement around that, and the growth of it and the expansion of it. It's just, you know, many districts have begun the DLI journey. Salem Kaiser has done, from all accounts, a remarkable job and has a commitment to continuing it. And we heard a lot of accolades about dual-language. And we heard a lot of accolades in those, in those next two areas, but they really need to be called out. So the fourth bullet point in terms of the strength of the district is both your Avid and CTE programs. We learned that Salem Kaiser is the only district in the Pacific Northwest with three Avid National Demonstration Schools. Some really, I want to just share actually an anecdotal story, if I can, that Kathleen was telling me that she, she was talking to some of her former colleagues who spent the day at McNary for Avid Demonstration Day and were totally blown away by the quality of what they're seeing, the richness of the instruction. And I believe 95% of Avid scholars go on to graduate. So, so kudos, but it is, it is well seen and understood to be a great strength of the district. CTE also, people are incredibly proud of it around that, with a long list of CTE programs. And some of them are CTE programs you don't see in a whole lot of places. Drone technology, robotics, cosmetology, cabinet making, some really, really good things. In the fifth bullet point, the nurturing the whole child through the arts. I was, I was particularly excited and interested to hear where this landed, because as a lifelong, or I should say, as a, maybe not lifelong, but my adult life was in Oregon as an educator, and I always heard, I always heard people talk about the arts in Salem Kaiser. So I wasn't surprised, and particularly music. I remember being an HR director, you know, when everybody was cutting music and Salem Kaiser managed to maintain and expand theirs. And folks in the community have said over and over that the valuing of arts serves as a connection point between the districts, its schools, and the broader community. It's a source of pride, longstanding commitment to musical education, but it's not limited to music. And the performing arts, the visual arts as well were often stated as a great strength of the district. And the sixth bullet point is about, is about the staff and about their commitment to the kids of Salem Kaiser. We hear that staff really cares, really cares deeply, and that, that's an important thing, and it's maybe not a, you know, we would want to make sure that our teachers are looking out for our students, but we heard, we heard from, a lot from our students in particular, how cared for they were by staff and all staff, and not just, let's say, let's say, the ones that they are immediately around, but licensed staff, classified staff, administrators, and being known and being, feeling cared for. And that we don't always hear, and I think that needs to really be called out. Folks see also, within the world of labor management relations, that Salem Kaiser's labor management relations are seen as collaborative and generally functional. That might be felt more by staff themselves than by students, but there really was a call out and appreciation for that. In general, staff feel like they're well taken care of by the district. And that's not to say that there aren't occasionally tensions or some frustrations, and in the work of teaching in schools, there certainly are. And so all the more reason why we were, we were not only pleased, but maybe wowed by the level of folks who felt really supported. And sometimes it's hard to do that in a large school district. But that is obviously happening here. I want to just repeat, and I might have said it before, but students feel seen and supported and understood by teachers and building administration in Salem Kaiser Public Schools. Now, before I move to the next one, I want to say, and maybe it's obvious, these are the strengths that we hear in the district. It doesn't mean that there aren't, it doesn't mean that every single child feels cared for in the Salem Kaiser Public Schools, and I know you know that. So there's always going to be room to grow. There's always going to be folks who might see these bullet points and say, well, I don't know if I would agree with that. And that goes without saying. So we're talking, we're listing here what the collective that we saw and heard from your stakeholders, from your families, from your parents, from your teachers, your licensed, your classified staff, your students. It's not to say that it's 100% in agreement on all of these bullet points. Let's move down to that, that next area, which are, what are the complexities and challenges that that are your new superintendent will likely have to tend to when they come on board next July? So divisiveness and polarization at the board level and with the community is maybe not a surprise that you see that there. I will say that we heard that, although we heard that throughout our stakeholder groups, we heard it more than you might think from kids. So kids see it and feel it, and many students convey that it impacts them and that they want to believe that their board is focused on them, meaning student issues, and not outside issues and political disagreements. It also does impact staff. It distracts them from what they want and need to do for kids. And in some cases, we heard from staff who felt like maybe there were parents or parent groups kind of looking over their shoulder and to make sure that they weren't providing some curriculum or writing something that might be seen to be inappropriate or improper in a way that maybe they didn't earlier in their career. And I guess I would also say that that some of the, I want to say that some of this is, is more, I'm struggling for words, Board. I think I'm going to leave that there, actually, and move to that next, move to that next bullet point. The next bullet point is a challenge in, in many, many districts, and Salem Kaiser is actually doing some really good work in this regard. But it's still a challenge, and we're talking about recruitment and retention of staff, and particularly diverse staff. And in the current era, simply recruiting and retention, and I speak as a former HR guy myself, never been easy, but it is so much more difficult giving the conditions in public education right now. It is, it is, it is to the district's credit that there is, we learned from the HR department that that a greater percentage of candidates of color are being hired than are in the, in the pool of applicants, which means, which shows that there's a real intentionality to making sure that, that quality individuals are being hired with a particular emphasis on diversifying the staff. And at the same time, the workforce does not mirror, in terms of diversity, it does not mirror the student body. And again, this is a body of work that I would, I would say perhaps virtually all school districts face, certainly virtually all large districts face. And so I want to point out that, that the fact that this has surfaced is actually, there's, there's, it's a good thing in that it's recognized, and it's a body of work that the, that the district is doing work on, as opposed to it not even being surfaced and recognized as a challenging area. Let's move to the third bullet point, which is about school safety and student conduct. There are concerns about school safety and student conduct, and the word concerns at the beginning of that is intentional. One of the things that we, one of the things that we heard was a disconnect between how issues of safety and student conduct are perceived by students in the school and those who are not in school. So safety is obviously, I mean, we can't overstate the importance of school safety in today's era, in the, in the era of schooling right now, whether that is about the infrastructure of school buildings, or whether that's about emotional safety. And it's quite clear across the board, across school districts, not limited to Salem Kaiser, that student behavior in the pandemic, post-pandemic era has become more challenging. And I think some would say even before that we went into the pandemic, it became more challenging, but certainly more now. So those are important things to attend to. There are certainly concerns about how behaviors are handled in school and the intensity and amount of. And at the same time, going back to this notion of concerns, there is a disconnect between what we hear students saying. There's a lot of, we hear really positive feelings by a lot of kids about how they feel seen and known and understood and cared for and emotionally safe in their schools. And again, I'm not saying every single kid feels that all the time, but there is a lot of that in Salem Kaiser. And then there's this disconnect with those who maybe aren't in the schools, grownups who aren't in the schools, who might have a perception about what's happening in the school, which might be informed by their own students, but there seems to be a difference there. And so one of the things that we'll get to in this final, in the last bullet point is, is there work to be done to actually tell a narrative, which is an accurate, true reflection about what is life like as a Salem Kaiser Public School student that might be different than what people maybe think it is? With respect to, and I think, I think the, the next item has some, has some similarities as well. There is a wondering that we hear in, in some of the feedback around academic rigor and about whether it's been, some, some folks would say maybe watered down a little bit or diluted a bit. And I think that's something to really dig into to understand to what extent is that based in reality, and to what extent is that not? And what does the data say in terms of that? Moving toward the fifth one, which is initiative overload and the desire for robust, tailored professional development. This is also not maybe a uniquely Salem Kaiser matter. Staff feel that, not limited to this particular school district, but because we're here talking to Salem Kaiser, there's a lot more expected from educators today than, than there used to be. The PD piece in particular, I would say, came from classified staff and a need and a desire to have more ability to really handle what is expected of them and sometimes feeling that they don't have the skills that they're being asked, asked to take on. And the initiative overload is kind of, I would say, seen as sort of an uneven implementation. One of the areas where we heard a lot about that was with respect to restorative justice practices. In that maybe there, maybe there, in some pockets, there's, there isn't a full understanding of the why. So that there are people who, who get restorative justices, restorative justice, they get it. But parents and some staff feel, and this goes back to the behavior issue, feel like misbehavior is increasing and teachers and classified staff aren't necessarily provided the support. There are parents that feel that they want to go back to sort of, I'm pulling back to that student conduct, which is really more about where this one lands. But some folks want to go back to maybe some harsher consequences, but with respect to the restorative justice, I think there's a lack of uniform understanding, or at least this is what we hear in the input of the why and the mechanics around restorative practices. So that might be an example of where, where folks feel like maybe they're being asked to manage things at the classroom level and don't necessarily know. They don't know, or they haven't yet developed the skills to be able, to be able to pull that off. That last item, I already did speak to, and I, so I don't know that there's much more I want to say about that. I think, I think, but I will say, although it's, it's the bottom of the list, it's a very pronounced thing. Kathleen and I had a lot of conversation about this, this difference of narrative about what's happening in the schools. And, and so that's a challenge that will, will likely still be present next year, but it's something to be thinking about and that candidates can be thinking about as well if they want to put their name in the hat for, how might I, how might I think about the distinction of perspectives that might be at play here? So that's, that is, so going back to where we said at the beginning, there were three questions that we really posited to your community. What are the strengths? What are the challenges? And what are the qualities and characteristics? And that third piece is what we're going to get to momentarily. One last piece I just want to share about this. So these headings will form a leadership narrative that we will have ready for board review. We'll email that out to the board this weekend. You are opening your vacancy board on December 5th, which is early next week. So we'll get that to you ahead of time, and basically what you're going to hear, you're going to, you're going to read a narrative that basically mirrors what I just discussed. So we'll talk about each of these bullet points, and it'll give some text or context around that. And this will be a document that is typically a very helpful document in the recruiting process, so the candidates can get a picture of what, what might it be like to be the superintendent of Salem Kaiser? And what are the things I need to be attending to if I have the great fortune to take on that role? Thank you, Board.
Great, thank you, Hank. Second vice chair, Guzman Ortiz.
I just had a quick question on one of the bullet points, if I may. Hank, the academic rigor bullet point, I missed the, who was that concern coming from primarily, again?
Can you, I don't see the bullet points anymore, so I didn't hear which bullet point you were referring to, Director.
It was the academic rigor and...
Yeah, let me, I'm going to ask Katie Rodden-Nord if you would speak to the academic rigor piece. I know I didn't, I didn't go into that much depth into that one, because that was really Kathleen's area, so this is a good opportunity for me to pull her into that.
I would say that that is a concern or a complexity or a challenge that I heard primarily from parents. And it was parents across the board. It was not just, you know, one single group of parents that I engaged with. It was multiple parents. And I also saw the same comments in the survey responses and also in my review of some of the engagement work that was done with Salem Kaiser's language communities. So it just seemed to be a pervasive sense of people want high expectations for their, for their children. And, you know, they just aren't sure that those are as high as they'd like them to be at this time. You know, there's a lot of focus on other very important things, and I think just continuing to, you know, to press on those issues and addressing that issue of rigor across, you know, all the grades and all the, all the content areas. addressing that issue of, of rigor across, you know, all the grades and all the, all the content areas.
I also just want to piggyback a little bit on one thing that, that Hank said, and, um, actually a couple of things. I just want to say, um, you know, first of all, what a pleasure it was to be able to engage with so many members of, of your district and your community. And, uh, it's always really hard to pare down, uh, that list of strengths because there were so many things that people are super proud of, um, rightly so. There are so many things that kids are excited about and having great experiences with. So I just want to make sure that you know, um, you know, it's, it's hard to just kind of narrow it down to, to such a short list. But those were the things that stood most out to us as we were reviewing all the data.
Director Avila.
And thank you, Kathleen. Can you be a little, is there any specific like around, um, the Senate bill 744 graduation requirements? Advanced placement opportu- uh, placement opportunities, still credit opportunities. Can you be, can you define any specifics around, around those concerns?
You know, unfortunately, the time that we have for these groups is pretty limited. So the opportunity to really drill down and ask, um, for specifics is, is somewhat limited. I mean, we're moving, we're trying to give everybody an opportunity to respond. It's more just like, hey, this is something that we heard and I, um, I think it's, I heard it often enough that I'd like you to be thinking about that and exploring more what it means. I, I think to your point, um, Director Avila, I, uh, I know that there's a lot of, uh, pride or, and you know, sense of achievement around like the graduation rates for your CTE concentrators, for your students who participated in Avid, um, your ID students, your students who participated in the dual language immersion program. So I, it may well be that people are seeing that level of achievement from those specialized, um, groups of, of students and, uh, kind of wanting to, wanting to raise the bar for everyone, uh, was sort of the sense I had.
Good, thank you.
That, I also want to say, I'm sorry, I don't want to belabor this part of the conversation, but, um, with respect to that second bullet point under challenges and complexity with complexities with respect to, uh, diverse staff. Students spoke very compellingly to, um, the impact on them when, uh, they do have staff who, who represent, um, their ethnicity or their, their, their language. And so, um, that is where much of, uh, that point of emphasis emerged from.
Wonderful. Thank you. Other questions? Okay. I will stop my screen share then. Oh, Director Shonda Gary. Do you want me to pull it back up?
Yes, please.
Okay.
So I, the, the question is about the process. Now, there are so many different communities and, you know, it got 13,000, which is a very good sample size. Now, did it proportionately represent different communities, uh, we have? Or in order to get a good understanding, there's some communities, you know, a small percentage, but they do have a important experience of some immigrant community language.
Yes. One of the things, thank you for, thank you for calling that out, um, that I want to be sure to note is, uh, just how much we appreciate the outreach that district staff did in engaging the various language communities. And when, uh, you see our leadership narrative this weekend, it will paint a, a picture for you of, uh, just how many, um, different, uh, groups in, in your community were, uh, were invited into this engagement process. And we just very much appreciated that and, and heard, you know, very, um, very important insights, uh, to be attended to.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right. Other questions or comments?
Uh, yeah, I, I would like to ask the question about the concerns about school safety and student conduct. In my conversations with both students and parents, there seems to be a lack of immediate uh, attention to any discipline issues that arise. Was that something that you found in your surveys?
I'll, I'll start that and then I think I'll, I'll ask Kathleen. Uh, this is, this is a great example where, yes, we did hear, we did hear those voices. But we heard a lot of voices and particularly with the behavior issues, which is why you see behavior as clearly a challenge area. So yes, I would say yes, and I want Kathleen to weigh in too. And I, I don't want to diminish that by speaking about students also feeling cared for and safe in their schools. I think both can coexist. Um, Kathleen, would you add anything to that on the behavior and the student conduct?
You know, I think, um, I guess I, I think you summarized it well, and I guess I'm thinking of my experiences, um, as having served as a superintendent and the fact that a lot of times, parents, um, of students that are involved in conduct issues or disciplinary issues often feel, um, frustrated because, uh, the, the administrators aren't able to share specifics about, um, you know, what the outcome was of a particular investigation or what kind of discipline was administered. So, um, as I heard those comments, I guess I was, um, you know, acknowledging them and, um, not necessarily seeing it as something that, that struck me as very out of the ordinary from what, um, probably parents and some students, um, experience or, or perceive anywhere.
All right. Any other board member, Director Shonda Gary?
So, I mean, I appreciate you pointing out one important thing about academic rigor. And when parents start seeing CTE program as almost like 99 point whatever percentage graduation. And now they are excited about dual language immersion as that possibility. So, I mean, it just speaks to me of what are the uh, potential we have by keeping a new benchmark and applying the principle of equity to lift rest up to keep that as the internal benchmark as opposed to, and so it kind of gives an opportunity. Is that how the parents looked at it? What else can we do to get our child into CTE or, uh, Harvard program or not entirely clear? They see that as a potential. They see where they are.
I didn't hear, um, many parents, uh, if any, that I can recall in the engagement groups, um, expressing disappointment or concern that they, uh, that their child didn't have access to one of those programs like Avid or CTE. Um, so I, I thought that was wonderful. Um, you know, that it sounds as though, uh, the programs are very accessible to, um, to parents and students that want to avail themselves of them. So.
Were they, were they aware of those programs is what I'm not entirely clear.
Yes, yes. I believe that that emerged as very much so because it was cited as a strength, um, by so many different groups and, and individuals.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, with that, I will stop my screen share again. And go back to our agenda here. Um, so we'll be coming to the candidate, um, the profile, ideal profile soon. But first we're going to move to number three on our agenda, which is public comment. Um, and so in addition to our written public comment that was received between November 16th and 28th, we offered an opportunity to provide public comment during tonight's meeting by calling in or joining via video, um, on this Zoom meeting. The opportunity to sign up opened when the agenda was posted Monday about 5:00 PM and closed this morning at 9:00 AM. However, no one signed up to comment. Um, Sylvia McDaniel, Director McDaniel, there she is. Um, she is our district's, uh, director of communications and community relations. And she will now provide us a summary of all of the written public comment that we received, which was very helpful. The written come, uh, written comment and this summary will also be posted on the district's website for the board meeting. So with that, I would love to turn it over to Director McDaniel.
Thank you, Chair Carson Cunningham, uh, board directors, superintendent Perry, student advisors. And the written comments, um, for the superintendent search, we had a total of 16 comments, written comments. Um, they commented on three statements. The first statement was, what statements on the list of criteria are most important to you? Um, responders could choose up to three of the 15 statements. 10 chose experienced and accomplished educator with a proven track record for leading a district toward greater academic achievement. Four chose steadfast guardian of safe, welcoming and inclusive learning environments. Four chose champions behavioral and mental health so that students can grow and thrive. Uh, three of the respondents chose uplifts, unifies and builds bridges through engagement with all stakeholders. Um, three chose establishes trust by focusing on shared values and common ground. Uh, the remaining 10 statements were chosen, um, zero or, or two times. Uh, the second statement was, is there something you would like to see changed in this list? Uh, nine responders indicated they didn't want to see any other changes. Uh, one responder for each of the following said, someone who is more focused on education than politics has more than elementary background, understands team building, trust and collaborative feedback from stakeholders, holds leadership accountable, hears parents' voices, focuses on qualified workforce instead of diverse workforce, doesn't compromise long-held values and catering to specific groups. Um, third statement, um, is there something you would like to see added to this list? Eight of the responders indicated no additions. Um, two of the responders, uh, commented, someone with relationship with parents and understands parents, families are key to student success. Uh, one responder for each of the following said, someone who is committed to anti-racist movements, demonstrates integrity and character, focuses on achieving higher academics, ensures children are not politicized and indoctrinated, committed to continued growth of CTEC and partnerships, has experience working with employee associations. And that was the end of those, uh, comments. And again, they will be posted on the, uh, district website.
Thank you, Director McDaniel, and thank you to all the community members who took time to weigh in on, um, our ideal profile. We really appreciate it. With that, we'll move on to number four on our agenda, which is our discussion of the Salem Kaiser Public Schools ideal profile for the next superintendent. Um, and Hank Harris will help facilitate us through this discussion. Um, first, I'm going to just do a little bit of an overview of the process for tonight. Um, so our approach is that the meeting's not intended to be a time to brainstorm, but as a time to review and discuss the suggested changes from the feedback from the board members, the public, um, what we heard, um, tonight from Hank and, um, Kathleen. Um, and then come to consensus on changes. Director Hyung, do you, do you have a question right now?
Yes, and you can tell me when the appropriate time is. The requested change I had was not reflected correctly. And so let me know when that time is because it's in there, but it's not where it should be or how it should be.
Okay, great. I'm outlining the process right now. Um, so after reviewing all the feedback from everyone, board, community, um, all the details shared that Hank and Kathleen just shared from all of the different groups that, um, they met with, um, the goal is to come to consensus on changes that reflect the values of the board as a whole. And so again, Hank and I will work in tandem tonight to facilitate that discussion and hopefully gain consensus. Um, we do need to vote later in the night on the profile. Um, so here's how I would like to run the rest of this process. We'll use the round robin, which we've become accustomed to, to hear suggested changes from each board member. Um, if there's consensus on a change, then we'll make the change. If there's not consensus on a change, then I'll ask if there's a board member who wants to make a motion to include the change and then call for a second on the motion. Um, and so if there's a motion and a second, then we'll take a vote. Um, and we will make or not make the change depending on the outcome of the vote. Um, so right now, um, the superintendent, I believe, is going to be the one to share her screen now to bring up the document as it stands. And I want to be really clear that we received all that feedback. The things that you see now on the screen that are in bold black are the things that were incorporated from the various individuals giving feedback into this process. Um, so those are the changes since the last version, um, as our attempt to start at a point where we've incorporated the vast majority of what directors brought forward. Not everything you see will be word for word what the, the director requested. Um, it may not also be right in that exact place in the profile as requested by the board director, but I did my very best to try to incorporate, um, what I thought the intent and meaning of the request was into the language of the ideal profile that was put together by Hank and Kathleen. So with that, um, I'll turn it over to Hank to start the process of, um, walking through the document. Hank, Hank, are you there?
I am. I'm sorry. I was, I was talking, but apparently nobody heard me because I was muted. So.
Oh, and I, I'd also like to welcome, um, one of our student advisors. I'm sorry, um, student advisor McDonald did join us quite a while ago and I wanted to acknowledge his presence at the meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you. Uh, so I think in terms of an open and comment, the only thing I actually want to, want to, well, let me say a few things. So one is just to, again, contextualize this document. This is, when we talk about the three questions, what's great, what are the challenges, what are the qualities and attributes and experiences? This document is that third question. Um, one of the things that was really powerful in, uh, in Salem Kaiser was the student centeredness of so much of the input. And what I mean by that is when people describe the ideal superintendent or what they were looking for in their next superintendent, uh, or what they'd want to see in candidates, so often it was about, it was framed in student language, um, whether that's somebody who connects well to kids or somebody who puts students at the center of it all. And there were, there are others, um, many others, which is why when we put together this document, and we were looking at it together, I remember Kathleen and I talking about like, we haven't really seen an ideal profile that was so student focused. And because the ideal profile comes out of the input we get, that's what you get. So we think that's a huge positive and something to kind of pat the district on the back for, uh, recognizing that certainly in our opinion, but I think in the opinion of the district, that, uh, the student really is supposed to be at the center of the work of the schools. I suppose some people might think that's obvious, but it's not obvious. It's not everywhere where students are actually, uh, Uh, I suppose some people might think that's obvious, but it's not obvious. It's not everywhere where students are actually, um, so, so saliently represented in what people say they want their superintendent to be focused on. So, um, what you are looking at board, just to echo what, what your chair just said is a, um, is a new version of this document, which takes into, uh, account the feedback that was, um, that was put forth over the last several days. Uh, I really appreciate a lot of folks, um, worked hard to move us along through this process. So I just want to, um, I actually want to, if I may, just quickly, uh, call out, um, Olga Cobb and Alice, um, Stuckmeyer and, um, and tonight, uh, Chair, thank you for, um, helping move this all along. I think that we're ready to facilitate. So, um, unless there are any questions about kind of the, what we're doing, I think we're ready to facilitate, which would be to, um, to begin your round robin. Is that what we should, is that what you're thinking Chair?
Yeah, let's go for it.
Okay.
So do we just take, so take the document as a whole and do round robin? Or do you want to break it into chunks?
No, I, well, I, I would say if, if we do a round robin and if there is a board member that wants, well, you will do a round robin. So you'll call on each board member in turn. And I think a board member could surface, uh, any particular item that they wanted. And ideally the comment will be specific to language, so not a brainstorming like, I wonder if we could add something about something isn't really what we want, if we can avoid that, but rather more, I would like to modify the fourth bullet point so that it says this instead of that. Um, and these bullet points are not numbered, um, so you'll need to, you'll need to just, um, probably just ident, just be clear whether you're saying the third one down or the fourth from the bottom or somehow so everybody knows which bullet point you're speaking to.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll type as people talk if they give it to me in concise statements. Um, and then if it's a go, I'll leave it in. If it's not, then I'll take it out. So I'll just try to monitor the conversation that way so people can see it.
Okay, great. Um, Director Hyun, do you want to, I saw your hand up a second ago. Go ahead.
Thank you for letting me start, uh, because I only have one thing and then I'll be easy, easy after that. Uh, so what I had requested was that the first statement under and who I requested that it say understands we educate students on behalf of their parents slash families and as such give priority to the, to the parents slash families' voices. Uh, where this ended up being put.
Would you say that one more time Marty for me?
Sure, I did email it to Alice. Do you want me to email it to you?
No, just say it one more time.
And the grammar may not be correct, so. Uh, understands we educate students on behalf of their parents slash families and as such give priority to the parents slash families' voices. One thing that we've been hearing a lot is parents don't feel heard. And if it wasn't for parents, there'd be no students, right? We educate their children. And where this was put, uh, which includes parents and families on the third bullet underneath and who, it, to me, it seems that parents are more of an afterthought. And I think parents need to be a priority. We need to value our parents and we need to make sure they know that they are valued.
Okay. Great. Um, let's see, so do we want to have then discussion on adding this bullet? Um, do other board directors have comments? Director Avila.
Yeah, um, Director Hyun, if you can clarify if you'd like the education that the parents are requesting to be taught or more on behalf of understand that we incorporate or include parents as, uh, strong partners of the education of our students.
It's not meant to say that parents are going to be in the classroom dictating everything that's going on. It, it is a partnership. We are doing this on their behalf. It is their God-given responsibility to educate their children. We are doing this on their behalf. They play a critical role. They need to be valued and listened to. And yes, some things could ta, be taken to extreme. That's not what's meant here. Uh, but parents do not feel heard and they need to feel heard. Because again, you know, they can, they're not happy. They can pull their kids out. We're, we're doing this for them on their behalf.
Thank you for the clarification.
Director Shandagiri.
Well, thank you very much. I mean, I can live with the original document, but I see where you're coming from, uh, when you talk, explain it this way. Uh, but even the legally speaking, parents do have a choice. Uh, that's what I learned in the OSBA conference. So in a way I thank all the parents for sending their children to our public schools. Because of your making a choice to send to our public schools. I know you had plenty of choices, but you chose public school. So thank you very much. That allows us to educate more people, including the ones who needs to be, you know, equitably supported and lifted. So that is how I see this statement, what Director Hyun said. So because they have a uh, basically the legal right to have their children. They can choose where it is, but they chose our school. So we are grateful to you for sending us school. That's how I interpret. Maybe I'm wrong. Somebody else can explain it. So I like that. And I can live with the rest of the document by including that and it kind of, this is not to say that we are taking the focus away from students. I really want us to understand that the way I see. Because a lot of times when immigrant parents come, it is because we want our children to have the best quality of education and for children to be safe. That's why we would like to be involved. And, uh, because in the process, we are also learning the system in this country so that we can do our best. So I like this. This captures both from a voice of an immigrant, parents and so many communities, and also is child focused. It doesn't mean we are not thinking of our children. We love our children as much as anybody else. Uh, we love our children more than anybody, any system can love our children. So that's how I see this. So I like this version. Thank you Director Hyun for explaining it.
Director Hyun, would you be open to, um, like moving? Cause I, I wanted, you know, I attempted unsuccessfully to incorporate, um, what you had suggested into the bullet where it starts with uplifts. I'm wondering if we move that one up to the very top. So it's the first bullet like you're saying, and we add language around, um, prior, which prioritizes and includes parents and families or something like, or parent and family voice, if that would get to your intent.
Um, moving that bullet up would be okay. What I want to make clear is that, um,
Prioritization, emphasis on the importance.
I don't want parents and families to be looked at as an afterthought. I mean, the whole community is important, but the parents of the children are more important to me. You know, and as a parent, you know, my number one thing is, was my child. So, uh, I, I want to make sure that our parents are treated the way they should be. They should be listened to and, and not treated as an afterthought or, or nuisance, which some of them feel like they are.
What if, okay, what if we just made it a sec, made it a slightly shorter bullet that says, and who prioritizes the voices of parents and families as a standalone bullet?
I'm sorry, repeat it again?
Who prioritizes and, so it would say and who, you know, up above prioritizes and includes parent and family voices.
How about prioritizes and values?
That works for me.
In.
Oh, Director Guzman Ortiz, sorry.
And I just, I just, yeah, I just had one comment and I think I absolutely, uh, again, as a parent and, um, having worked with families and parents for a long time, and that's one of my big drivers for the work that I do nowadays. I, I, I think when I'm looking at this, I'm really just trying to keep my eyes on the large system, right? And everybody who is impacted and who we are here to serve. And so I'm feeling a little conflicted with calling out like only like prioritizes families. Um, not because I don't think it's important, but because I, I want to hold an equal weight when it comes to like children, families, educators and everybody who is a part of the system. And so I, I would prefer that we keep language that kind of leverages everybody as important versus saying like additional weight on one or another. Um, when we've done such an intentional job of reaching out to partners and families and, and, um, educate educators, community of all types. So how can we balance all of the different perspectives? Um, um, that's where a little bit of my conflict is with just calling out prioritizing parents and families, um, alone.
My comment on, on that. Uh, so again, without parents, there would be no students. And, um, there was another point I was going to make, but it just flew out of my head. Uh, and parents can choose to, to take their kids elsewhere. I mean, I just don't think we have given parents the, the focus, the, and the voice uh, that we should have, having been a parent dealing with a district before, before Superintendent Perry, I want to make that clear. Um, really getting the runaround and, and not treated well. And basically just like your nuisance go away. And I just, parents are important. We don't have a job without parents because we wouldn't have students without parents. So I understand that there's other groups that are important as well, like our taxpayers and other community members who, um, you know, uh, the, the kids that graduate, they affect the entire community, you know, and how well-trained they are and, and all, all those different things. I get that. But I, parents to me are just on a plane by themselves. That's my, just my opinion.
Uh, you know, as, as I'm hearing.
Director Salazar?
Yes, I have a maybe a, a way of putting them both together is that I feel that there needs to be both, all of the, uh, elements and factions that are involved. But probably a key word I would say there would maybe be collaboration. Because, uh, I know that the parents, you know, we have to have as, um, Director Hyden says, we have to have the parents, we have to have their help. You know, I think for anything that we do, but I think there is also other, uh, elements in the community that we also have to have. And to have the, that collaboration, I think is, is something that, that we need to have, uh, for the success of the students.
Thank you Director Salazar. Director Avila?
Yeah, I really, uh, I feel the same sentiment with, um, Second Vice Chair Guzman Ortiz and a little bit with Director Salazar saying. Um, and to me, I think we're, the word prioritizes, and if we can value and includes instead of prioritizing of keeping that equal weight and not taking away from our educators, our teachers who, you know, who this is their career and profession that are, are educating the students. Um, I just feel if we put prioritizes in there, um, takes that away, but we, but we need to come up with this language that sees parents as, um, critical partners uh, within, within the system, within the classrooms, within the district. So I would like to get to a point where where that can satisfy everybody here and keep that equal weight.
Um, Director Guzman Ortiz.
Sorry, I just, I guess too, I know we've, we've kind of discussed this one for a bit, and I know that, um, Chair, you had suggested moving that, I believe it was the third bullet. Oh, I lost it now.
The superintendent moved
Yeah, I moved it up.
Uplifts to the top.
Okay.
So uplifts, unifies and builds bridges through engagement with all community. And then that's where we were, where I had added the feedback from, I think it was both Director Shandragiri and Director Hyun to include parents, to call out parents. And so I had put it, I think there, but it didn't have some of the like describing words around value or priority or that kind of thing. Student advisor, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I get, my suggestion was like, if it, if I read which includes collaboration with parents and families, um, to, uh, Director Salazar's point and just kind of make it a more concise sentence versus.
How about which values and
Mm-hmm.
prioritize it or values collaborates and includes families and parents.
Yeah.
With that, can we build consensus around that? How we feeling? I can't see Marty. Um, there you are.
I, I need a moment to read it.
Okay.
Like just give me a moment.
I'm scrolling through the, the squares to see everyone.
I think we need some
Collaborates.
For that community period of some sorts of just very long sentence for my.
But, but I like that thing. I mean,
M-dash.
Valuing, collaborating and including.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, if you need to grammar fix it or whatever.
Okay.
I, I like those words in there. Values, collaborates and includes. I, I like those words in there.
Okay. Wonderful.
Before, before, uh, Isaac's, yeah, before Isaac says, um, I think in their putting, where do we have, uh, includes parents and families as critical partners? Sorry, go ahead, um, Isaac, if that's okay, Chair.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Um, yeah, I was going to say something about collaboration, but I'm actually, I'm really satisfied with the statement that we just worked out. Just a question was where, where are we? I feel like there's a live, like we're working on this live. Is there like a space where we're doing that? Cause I, I can't find like where, it, like I can't see where we're like typing out this new.
Oh, it should, Christie's sharing her screen. Maybe it got hidden behind your Zoom window.
Uh, that.
It's not a live document. It's a Word document.
Let me see if I can find it real quick. I will.
It's just, the superintendent's just sharing it on the Zoom screen. We're not all in the document at the same time. To, sorry if that helps clarify.
Okay, maybe I'm missing the Zoom screen. I'm, I'm, I'll try to find it. I'll let you guys know if I.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Director Shandagiri.
Well, thank you Chair. You know, I mean, I, of course, we are kind of wordsmithing here, but the intent is parents are the primary, are the first teachers or, you know, every parent loves their, I mean, the one of the Chukisi, Chuk Island parent explained to me, families and parents love their children more than anyone or any agency can. And to me, all of us are collaborating with parents and families in helping, uh, focus on the children. So I think the, uh, probably that's how I see it. When parents bring their little kids to our school, we are all collaborating with them and helping them. And we are pushing the thing. So we can capture that hopefully where there is a central place for families and when parents or guardians, in some cases, some of the islanders, children are living with their guardians rather than parents here.
Yeah, I think that's why we use the term family to try to incorporate.
That's what I was thinking. And then all of us are collaborating with them to make sure their hopes, dreams, aspirations come true at the end. So that we are all pushing the car in the same direction rather than saying one is more, one is less. That's how I like to see.
And do you think this statement now reflects what you just said?
So which, so my sense would be how as a district and board, we collaborate with parents slash families, or in this case, I want to use the word family in a broader sense.
Right, but what we're looking for right now is for this, the. Right, but what we're looking for right now is for this, the ideal candidate. To do these things. We're not.
That's what the candidate can work, lead the district in such a way that all of us collaborate. With the parents and families. In order to. Uh, focus on the children and their future.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's how I see it then, because ultimately we are all collaborating with the parents. And they bring their little children so that we all focus on the children. I don't know if that makes sense.
Yeah, mhm. Okay, I see that Hank's hand is up.
Uh, I I have both um just a minor comment. And on the syntax, um but I also think we might want to, if it feels like there's a consensus. Maybe go with that and go to the next one. And if the consensus maybe move forward and circle back to this at the end. Um, so that's my my bigger picture. My my more in the weeds is um the the placement of the word collaborates collaborates doesn't. Seem to be syntactically uh correct. And so um, cause you can value and include parents, but you can't really collaborate parents. Uh, and so I wondered if. It it might be better to say which um, this is a little clunkier, but would but might be better to say which values and includes. Parents and families as critical partners with whom we collaborate.
We'll let, how about we let Alice wordsmith her.
She's a perfect.
Grammar, she's. Our queen of that.
Yes, excellent idea. Thank you.
So long as you have the right words, Alice will put them in the right order. As long as it doesn't change the meaning.
And could I add one thing? Um, I think we might want to add um caregivers in there because we do have um caregivers. That expands that parent definition a little bit. And I also wonder if. Saying families as critical partners already uses collaboration, but we'll let Alice um give us, give us the words.
Okay. Um, so I think we can then delete the strike through one for clarity. And then, oh, Director Hyun.
Yeah, I was just say to Superintendent Perry's comment, yeah, I was, I put families in there because I know not every student. Um, lives with their parents. And I also understand we have some students that are homeless and. Uh, there there's no way to capture all those different, different things. Um, so parents and then whatever word maybe that can capture the other circumstances a student may find themselves in would be great.
Thank you. All right, so um. Director Shonda Giri, you had said with that, those changes, you feel. Like mostly good about the remainder. You see your, your suggestions and everything included.
Well, it's, I think, uh, this is a beautiful written document. And you know, this is going to be summarized in a way you're going to look for it. Ultimately. It captures all the important elements that we are looking for. More than the wordsmith thing, I'm looking for the important elements because ultimately you can't go around interviewing people with. And or grammar ways. You just have to take the gist of what this captures. It captures everything. It's so beautifully done. I like the way it captures the bilingual, multilingual, multicultural. It values the primacy of the families and you know, whatever the definition of family you want to go with. It still, it centers around children first as the main focus. It helps us push the car in the same direction, as they call it. And it's data driven so that it mitigates all kinds of uh our own implicit biases and it kind of. Gives us a way to hold ourselves accountable and demonstrate to the community and the families who so. That you know, thankfully, because of their generosity, they chose public schools. They had choices. They made this choice. So we want to keep that. And keep doing better and better as we move. So I support this. I would like to. Make no other changes.
Great, thank you. Okay, let's go on to first or second vice chair Guzman Ortiz for our round robin. If there's any additional. Comment, suggestion, changes you'd like to see.
I had read a comment about this and I I think I'd just like to verbalize it on the um. The variety of data-driven approaches um in terms of recognizing. The quantitative and qualitative data that goes into that. So I don't think it's necessary that we like. Write it out, but I do think that that's just going to be important. And I just wanted to highlight. The importance of that understanding that narrative and stories are also important to kind of feed and um inform decisions. In in the district.
So you don't, do you think you want to add anything?
I don't want to make it wordy, but if we are on consensus that data captures the different types of. Then I'm okay with uh um keeping it as it is. But I I just kind of wanted to highlight. That importance at least to me what, you know, all encompassing data means. So unless anyone feels like we need to add it, but if we're all in agreement that. Um, when we see data, it includes that both qualitative and quantitative, I'm okay leaving it as is.
Director Shanda Gary.
Uh, the the, you know, second vice chair Guzman Ortiz, thank you for explaining that. Because when you say data, we often think of numbers and numerals. But data can also mean capturing a qualitative experience or lived experience. So. And the data should ideally match with people's lived experience. That's how, otherwise we are simply doing data imputation, you know, just trying to take some number and make it fit in. So. I mean, we can go into the weeds, but I like the idea that our data should, it should broad category of data-driven approaches. And then we can, like our KPI does, we can take qualitative data or quantitative data or whatever way we want to. But the whole idea as a superintendent uses something more than just their own personal. Uh, impression as opposed to something that they can demonstrate consistently. That's what I was hoping when I suggested data to. So there's something objectivity is there. Otherwise it'll be like I said, so that goes. And that way, ten of us can have ten different I said so, and that may not hold good tomorrow, right? Ultimately, we had to go back to our community and parents and say, this is what we are doing. This is how we're making changes. That's what I meant. It could be a quantitative data, it could be a qualitative data, but something that is more than I said so.
Same point. Um, okay, Director Avila. Your turn.
Yeah, thank you uh very much. Uh, the top, the top um well points number three at the end. After including families, I think I would like to add um. With including families with cultural competence and cultural humility. So this I I want to have this person, you know, really knowledgeable of. Of diverse cultural differences, how we engage with with different communities. How we need to approach with them, how do we need to speak with them? Um, and having, you know, having that level ready so they can come in and really be effective. Uh, communicators and listeners and being able to make changes along alongside with our communities.
Could I make a friendly suggestion?
Absolutely.
That we move the statement that you just made to after knowledgeably.
Yeah, I I didn't, I didn't want to wordsmith it, so I just kind of found that um.
So I think if we said and speaks compellingly. Compellingly. Knowledgeably with cultural competence and cultural humility.
Comma empathetically.
Empathetically and with ease in a multitude of venues and with a variety of diverse audiences, including families. That it might. Come more meaning.
Yeah, I was gonna allow that, you know, if everybody appreciated this, um, then allow Alice to wordsmith it.
Any um more discussion on adding that as a. It's sort of, it just, so two additional describers. Of how someone would intentionally listen and and see knowledgeably.
And 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 went to the extent that they sometimes that we did last year was, you know, listening to our um Pacific Islander students and just. And understand how important um that we can make the small change of adding uh their rice to their lunch menus. Um, to fill in them, you know, in incorporated and being heard and seen. So things like that.
Director Hyun.
I'm I'm not sure I like the word cultural humility. I think I understand. Uh, what you're trying to say with that, but maybe there's a a different choice of word. I think we want to be. You know, um, honest if we don't understand and we want to be learners and be willing to learn and. And you know, just be um. Humor like I don't, I don't understand, help me understand the the appropriate way or or whatever. I I don't know, it's just. The the word just kind of throws me off. I don't know if there's a better word. That's just my thought. I mean, I won't, I won't fight it. It's just. Another word would be better. I just don't know what it is.
I think you just perfectly described Marty what it is. That was awesome. So being, you know, open and listening to cultures, where cultures that like aren't your primary culture and and. You know, that's exactly. What the humility piece is, so.
Would you accept a small friendly? Change like cross-cultural competence and cross-cultural humility, because we have so many cultures. Uh, Director Avila, would you consider that?
Would 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 empathy be a better word than humility? Cause I'm I'm a little confused with humility also. I understand. What Salo, uh Director Salvo is uh wanting to uh convey. But I don't know how that would come across. You know, to other applicants and stuff that we were looking at.
So to so to yeah, to those two points where um Chair Ashley um. Ashley stated on the response to Chair Hyun or sorry Director Hyun. You know, the humility part is just coming, someone to come in and say, I don't know everything. I don't know and understand, and I'm willing to learn and listen to those around my team. My educators are students, are communities. Empathetically is uh going to be a little bit different. It's a different um, a different attitude, a different skill. I think that's important to call out alone. Um, and then to Director Turned Gary's, you know, we can say uh cross-cultural or even multicultural competence. Uh, to to incorporate that. So I hope that, and then I don't know if Director Guzman Ortiz has something to speak on this as well. Just had her hand up.
Yeah, I I guess I'll just make a quick comment. Um, I I really appreciate you bringing up the cultural humility, Director Avila. Um, I was actually speaking about this just earlier this morning and I I will say that um. As a daughter of uh immigrant parents, Mexican parents, humility is a huge value of ours. And to me, seeing humility here actually feels really reaffirming of what even like my culture has. Um, instilled in me, right? To be humble and to show up with that learning mind and that open heart always. So to me, it's actually really reassuring, really reaffirming to kind, to see the word humility spelled out because I have heard this. You know, time and time again, growing up. Um, and it's always about, it's a strong value that I carry. Um, myself, and I think it is important for us to try, you know, to make, to highlight this in terms of. Searching for a new leader for a district, somebody who is willing to show up and say, hey, you know what? I don't have all of the answers, but I'm willing to listen and I'm willing to learn.
Should we do multicultural, multi uh um to mirror that we have multilingual, multicultural above? Is that the most inclusive language?
It's consistent. I like it.
Well, uh, can I say something about that? You know, the reality is we have to hire a superintendent. And uh, good start will be just cross-culturally trying to learn, but to be. If really looking for somebody who is multicultural competent. By June, we need a superintendent. So uh, I'm just trying to be a little bit more. You know, even I like the way humility, cultural humility is also fine, but. Even cross-culturally or within the same thing, just to say, I don't know.
Yeah.
I want to learn and listen, because if you really start looking so much. It fine tune, I don't know how to find such a human being with hundred and ten different culture.
Uh, student advisor McDonald.
Yeah, um, I I'm really happy with the way it's written right now. And I just wanted to kind of, again, I think humility is a really good word here because. Um, especially with like empathy, empathy is really important characteristic, but I think that does get thrown around a little bit more. And I think humility. Um, will have a bit more of an impact on the reader because it's um, it's not used as much and it's kind of a different. Um, trait. And I also think it emphasizes that kind of um. It's more of a mindset. And so to have the mindset of humility and to always have to be learning, I think that's really important, especially as we hope. To have a superintendent who sticks with us for years and years and years and the amount of change that we've seen and we know will happen over years like. That's a trait that will allow them to make good decisions. In the midst of change and whereas like other things might be um, not as not as good of a mindset. So I just, I really like this word here. I think it will. Um, attract a a good superintendent.
Right. Okay, um, do we have consensus around adding multicultural competence and multicultural humility? Is there anyone opposed? I'm trying to scroll through.
Hank has his hand up and I also just had. I do think it's multicultural competence and cultural humility. I don't know if it's multi, I don't know if the multi fits over there. Is that what you were gonna say as well?
That's exactly what I was gonna say. Um, I want to make sure I understand everything that I'm gonna be saying then, and I I I. The super, exactly what I was thinking. Um.
That makes sense to me, just.
It might. It might flow better, and this might be an Alice thing that we don't, but it might, if we do make that change and I. It might flow better if the cultural humility precedes the multicultural competence. It might just sound better. But I was going to say exactly what your superintendent said.
Perfect. All right. Let's see, let's move, unless there's any opposition, I'll move to Director Salazar for any overall. Comments or feedback in our round robin?
No, I I think it's very good and I I appreciate the clarification on the. Uh, cultural um humility, because I do think I'm glad to see that included in 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 the form that it has been done.
Wonderful. All right. Did I skip anyone? Director Hyun.
You're ready for your next round robin?
I think we're ready.
Okay, so I didn't think I had anything else and. Maybe it needs a clarification or something like this. So I'm talking about the fourth bullet from the bottom.
Okay.
It says values by literacy, understands the instructional needs of English language learners. And can lead implementation of dual language expansion. And so I know that we've been working a long time on our um Eng- English language learners and I. I believe they're in pretty good hands. We've got some good programs going. Uh, my concern is for the. Native English speakers as we're trying to become. You know, have bilateral uh students in in Spanish and English, right? Is the the goal. And so my concern is we need, do we need to um. Make sure that's a point of clarification in there because I'm not a teacher, but. Is there a different method for? For those students or is it the exact same method? You know what I'm saying? I don't, I don't know. Do do we have to do something different for our English, like a native English language speakers? To get them up to speed with Spanish? Christie, do you understand what I'm trying to say?
I I do because um, oops. Eh, there I go. I do understand because you're talking about kids that are uh. English speakers learning Spanish and kids that are Spanish. So I wonder if the instructional needs.
Or any other language.
Yeah, it's just.
There are all Spanish speakers that are learning.
It might just, it might just be language learners um that and just take out the English language. Um that and just take out the English language learners part of that statement, uh but I understand what you're saying.
Okay, I would be okay with that one. Because that's what we want.
Director Shonda Carey.
Well. I I am, it is my head babe, so please stop me if I go too much into it. I mean, to me, it's it's a, we have to call out the emerge, this program, the dual language immersion model, which will really be. Good for children who are native English speakers, who are native. Spanish speakers and other language. And I really, the way I see is for the next twenty thirty years, the superintendent will have to be committed to keep expanding because we've got so many languages. We're just starting with Spanish and English. So I would like that to be called out that not only the instructional languages of emerging English language learners, but. Having the dual language immersion or multilingual immersion as a. Concept throughout this district, because that is. How I would like to see the new superintendent take leadership. Because the families from Chukis family asked, when will Chukis be taught along with English to start with? And then I had others who are asking it like with, because they are beginning to see the value of more than one languages. The doorway to have bi-cultural competency and it's not just. You can't stop at this level.
Director Chanagiri, we removed the English language learners, so it's just language learners, and so that can be Spanish and English or. Or anything else, whatever languages uh we want them to be literate in.
And it it's, and then it speaks to the leading of the implementation of the dual language expansion.
Yeah, they have to be committed towards. Really, it not just start and stop. That's what I'm hoping the new superintendent takes leadership. You know, the Washington state passed a law saying that's a standard throughout, so I would like to see Salem Kaiser take that leadership in our state. In which we can.
Right. So like uh that statement, then do you think that captures it, Director Shondra Carey? And lead implementation of dual language expansion?
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's the intent. I mean, that's the best we can put it in this document. Ultimately. It's for the board to make sure we hold the superintendent accountable to continue till the end, even beyond our lifetime, literally, that's what it is. Going to take. You can't take the pedal, foot off the pedal, that's what I'm trying to say, putting it blunt.
It just, just wondering if we um, as I was hearing uh Director Shondra Gary speak, if. We can add that and can commit to lead, and that we were like really emphasizing that commit, that desired commitment to continue leading the effort, so.
Thank you. Thank you for that, because every year the budget will have to be allocated. Number of schools will have to be identified, recruitment and oversight. There is a lot of commitment we need. And we just can't let go.
Okay, good point.
Thank you, thank you. I like that.
Um, I saw Director Avila, you had your hand up, it went down, right?
Well, still a wrench in there, you know, I think. I I hear what Director Hyun's saying, but we also have English language learners as our, as a, as a. As a subgroup of our students with, that we measure highly on. Um so was the intent in the beginning of really focusing on English, English language learners and getting them up to, you know, the power of. Our native speakers. And so do we need to be intentional about? Committing programs, resources to English language learners as well through here? So I feel like it, it was addressing English language learners, now it's, now it's kind of, we're not being intentional anymore. And then lumping everybody in to develop language.
I. So we have been intentional, you know, about our English language learners. My concern was, as uh we are trying to graduate, the goal, I believe, is biliterate. Uh educated students that the way it was written. Yes, it pointed out the English language learners, but it forgot about the English native speakers. Uh so. You know, we can have two different statements or something. I mean, every child's important and giving them, each one of them the best education we can. And and trying to get them to be biliterate, you know, is the goal, right? This, that's this goal, and um. And they may not even be native Spanish speakers. They might be native French speakers, and they're coming in and needing to learn English. And potentially Spanish. I'm not sure how how that works with a dual language program. Is it just English and French, or is it? But I just felt like we were forgetting about the native English speakers by not saying something, and that's why. You know, each, again, each child is important.
I added a statement here. This is a bit redundant with the second, with the next bullet, but there is a point of. Um our students that are learning English are one of the highest risk group, lowest performing groups if we don't really attend to them. So um I don't know, I do, um I'm thinking about what um Director Avala said about that. Um and so maybe it's a separate bullet, because we have dual language, which should take. Um values by literacy and commits to leading the implementation of dual language expansion. And understands the instructional needs of students learning English as a separate bullet. Might be a way to address both.
That looks good to me.
And.
Thank you.
And to that point, a superintendent period, um I love maybe also kind of your feedback, because I I've. Been thinking a lot. I know we've heard about this as well, and when we think about recent and arrivals, newcomers, refugee students, and how we also are kind of in a different. Um situation contextually than other districts across the state, and just wanting to really highlight that, is that something that would make sense? And this kind of goes for everyone, including that same bullet, right, like the instruct, the unique instructional needs of both English language learners and. Um recently, I don't, I don't know, I know we use the language, the term recent arrivals in our KPI reports. Um but I just kind of wanted to add and include that, because I I know we've talked about it, we're we're looking at. Um perhaps, you know, having more families and and students. Uh in in the district in the in the coming year or so, um so just want to really highlight that if we can.
Yep, that's the kids who are on my mind too, as I was typing that, so I put it as a separate bullet.
I have a clarification question, and maybe I'm not understanding something. So, um. Are. See, how do I say this? Are the unique needs uh for those? For those students who have need to learn English, are they all recent arrivals? I guess.
No.
Okay, that that was what I need clarification on, because if they're all recent arrivals, then. Then we would need to get rid of part of that sentence, I think.
No, um and I only would say add recent arrivals, because we do really have um an influx of students that are recent arrivals to the countries. And to say that.
Uh and yeah, and I suppose you could have kindergartners or first graders who have been here a number of years, um and haven't been in school and around English that much yet, so, okay.
Okay. So, excuse me, as you can see it now with the, the bullet broken into two, everyone. Live with that? Feel good about it? Looking for. Consensus?
I I have a quick question, if I may.
Yep, just one sec. I'm looking to see Osvaldo, you good? Okay. Okay, go ahead, Director Shondra Gary.
In that uh place where the cursor is dual language expansion, are we referring to dual language immersion expansion? Immersion program expansion?
Yes.
Do you think we should call it out? That's because that was a model that. In the book explained to us during the training.
Mm-hmm.
Dual language immersion expansion, because that's different from the. What is that, the scaffolding model or what's other model that they had? Leading the implementation of dual language immersion. Thank you.
Okay, other. We're on our second round of round robin. I don't remember where we left off. I think Director Hyun went first. Director Shondra Gary, anything additional?
Uh I I think we, I'm happy with what we are, and we captured everything so beautifully in nice way.
Okay, thank you. Um second vice chair Guzman Ortiz.
Yeah, to that other bullet point that we added of understanding unique instructional needs, um. I would like to add some beyond understanding. Like, what is the actionable piece to that, right? Because if one thing is to understand, but then another is to either like value or commit, or so I was. I had a word and I just lost it, but um.
Mm-hmm.
Implementation strategy.
Like understands and and is committed to, uh I don't know if I want to add committed again, but. Uh just, I had a word and I completely.
Something like that? Well, we can come, we can just come back if you want to think about it.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to kind of go beyond the just general understanding and wanted to add something on.
Okay, awesome. Um, let's see, Director Salazar.
Uh no, I just, I really am impressed with the discussion regarding uh dual uh dual language. And uh with that also, the levels of those students as they progress. From the elementary schools two through two to the high schools. And as it says here, the unique instructional needs of those students as they, as they progress through K twelve. So uh, yeah, I'm pleased with what's been developed.
That's all. Oh, Director Shondra Gary?
Second vice chair, would you consider understand and lead implementation of needed programs? To serve the unique instructional needs of students learning English and recent arrivals. So as to close the achievement gap?
Understand and lead the unique instructional.
You know, I understand and commit to leading implementation of needed programs. To serve the unique instructional needs of students learning English lang- uh learning English and recent arriving English learners. So as to close the achievement gaps. Because implementing a program with an outcome in mind, that's what I was thinking. If you would agree to that, that's one.
Of just calling out the closing achievement gap in in.
Because equity should lead to an outcome. Equity doesn't lead to a. Uh an outcome which has the best possible outcome, then it's not equity in my mind at least. Because that will fit in with our equity lens that, okay, we are not only. Serving the unique needs, but we are implementing a program or the best model, which will lead to closing the achievement gap. That way we lift those students who are. English language learners and Rial group, recent arriving English language learners. That's another. Four years or so, we can call them Rial. After that, we have to call them something. This English language. I would like to see there closing the gap, because if you see our data and KPI, there is some work to be done with that.
Yeah, and I guess I'm wondering, because if we're doing work on our like, on our policies and our results policies, I'm just wondering how we can. Circle that.
Right, we're not making statements, I think, in any of these about.
Okay.
The why, um but I agree that is the why, um Director Shondra Gary. I just don't want to get too.
Yeah.
Um too many words, like maybe we can just, Director Guzman Ortiz, you can think of um.
Because I want them to implement something which is going to bring some meaningful change.
Right.
Otherwise we'll only be describing the problem. That's not enough.
But what we're describing right now is sort of a, you know, we want them, this. Amazing candidate to have an understanding and commitment.
Okay, alright.
Serving. Students who have unique instructional needs. Because this is a. Um. You know, unique part of our population in our schools. Uh I think we all, we're all in agreement about the importance and the why. I just don't know if we want to get into sort of. Outcomes-based language in this document.
Because just like the next bullet talks about values by literacy and commits to leading implementation. Of dual language immersion, which is a model which we all know have one of the goo- good results. It's the same way I was thinking, understands and commits to leading implementation of a model. Which will serve the unique, which is the best practice or serve the unique instructional need. If some superintendent has had ex- experience on that, why not? Look for someone who has worked in that area. Let's say it's from the New Mexico program, somebody applies. We should grab that person.
I I like how it is, if anything, I'm just like, understands and commits to leading the implementation of inclusive and unique, like. Just including that, perhaps inclusive, unique instructional needs, and like, we're already kind of calling out, you know, that it is. To, to, to respond to what the need is versus.
Alright.
That works, that incorporates your, your language, Shanti, I think.
To share with that a little bit, uh my experience with dual languages and ESL programs is that they. Uh show results at different times, you know, it could be like a two or three year span where you can see a tremendous growth. And up to that time, you may not see a lot of growth in the initial phase of the programs. So to say right away, it's gonna. Show a decrease in the gap. I don't know what metrics we would use in order to uh, you know, validate those, 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 those issues. But I think that it, over time, it will show uh progress and 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 uh. Will make that gap close, but. At different stages, it's gonna show different uh indicators of that improvement.
Yeah, absolutely, and you joined the board right at a great time, Director Salazar, because we're getting into some, um studying some of those. Um in our results policy, we're reworking it right now to say, you know, what do we want to see and when, based on which data? For these particular kids, um also lots of other different measures that we look at, and so. It, that's where we're doing some of that work and we haven't set those yet, so. Perfect timing and and great point by Director Shondra Gary and Director Salazar. Okay, we need to move, we need to move on, on our red robin.
Yeah, can I say two quick things here? Sorry, I can't get to my. Um I know, it's all, yeah, let's do red robin though, how about that? Uh I think we'll let Alice tackle that bullet, because we've got some inconsistencies of language. And then on, I want to go back to Doctor, uh Director Shondra Gary's dual language immersion expansion. We really should, should just say program. Because immersion is only one part of the program. There's cross, cross cultural competencies, you know, the three pillars, so um. I I think it needs to be programmed.
Okay.
Okay, um, let's see. We have not heard a second time yet from Director Avila, I don't think.
It's a wonderful document, let's move forward.
Okay, um I haven't had a chance yet. I do have one kind of more substantive suggestion. Um, we talk about placing top priority on student well-being. Um up, let's see, what is it? That third bullet after the and who? And so my suggestion would be that we would have. One bullet that says places top priority on student, staff, and educator well-being. And that would be a standalone bullet.
Mm-hmm.
And then um the next one would be. Places the student at the center, like no substantive changes in that, but. And I don't know if we want to use the word places. Again, we could come up with a different. Action word there, but I do want to call out the importance of. The superintendent focusing on. The well-being of student, staff and educators. Director Hyun.
Oh, just clarification questions. Educators are staff, so isn't that redundant? And shouldn't it just be students and staff? Every, every staff member is important, from bus drivers to the people in the lunchroom, to our teachers and our IAs.
Yeah. I agree, they are all staff. Um, I call educator in particular. I think for a similar reason. That you call out parents, um, because. You know, our teachers and support professional, everybody, um, that educates is important. Educator is a. A. Further describing word of staff if there's. We also have like two different unions representing our teachers versus all of. The people that support our, our schools. So if there's a better word to describe. I'm open to that. I do really want to call it educators, though.
Chair.
Director Shonda Gary.
Would you consider a friendly change? Not just calling out staff and educator well-being. But. Creating a culture that empowers staff and educators. And all those who serve in our district. So everybody brings the best.
So how would you, so, um, like creates a culture, um.
Creates a culture of staff and educator empowerment and well, well-being or something. No, the student is, but the staff and educators have to feel empowered. So they feel safe to speak and share their ideas. And. That way we can improve their well-being now. It's that way we bring the best out of our teachers and staff and they come up with their best ideas and they feel safe. And empowered. They're all like, I mean, so much to offer. Empowered.
I like that a lot, Director Shonda Gary.
Thank you.
Maybe we should call out specifically, um. Instead of just, I don't know that staff is descriptive enough. Maybe we could say. Um, education, support professionals and educators.
That I leave it to you to decide. But the idea is everybody feeling empowered to.
Exactly.
Doing the creative best. And, and that way. We create a beautiful program with five thousand empowered people. Contributing their best for our children.
So creates a culture of support?
It creates a culture which. Uh, creating, it creates a culture where. Yes, you know.
Okay.
Just staff feel empowered and well-being. I'm kind of getting lost in the wording. Wordings to you.
Creates a culture where education, support professionals, educators and students are empowered.
All right.
That works for me. I know I really like the word well-being, though. We could get that in there somehow.
No, no, that will create well-being. That's a product.
True.
Can't you just say places priority on their well-being?
That's where I was headed.
Yeah, perfect. See what we can do when we wordsmith together.
Don't trust my English.
You're doing awesome. You've come up with lots of good suggestions.
Trying not to laugh too hard. I've got ritz crackers in my teeth right now.
All right, um. Is that okay with everyone as it reads now? So creates a culture where all staff, including education, support professionals, educators. Or, um. And students. Wait, I don't know. I'm getting lost now.
Think. I think it's close enough for Alice.
Okay, perfect. And then having the second bullet be prioritizes. The students at the center of decision-making. Um, so that doesn't really change that one too drastically. All right, I don't think I have any other additional suggested feedback. Um, so that would conclude round robin unless I forgot anyone. Um, student advisor McDonald, unless if there's anything you wanted to add. Want to give you that opportunity?
This looks great. This looks great.
Okay, great. And we did have our student advisor Brennan also weighed in, um, in writing to let us know. That, um. Z was fine with this, uh, the, the previous version. Hopefully Z will also. Like this one. All right. Okay, with that, um, the plan would be then to take a break. For about ten to fifteen minutes so that Alice can work her magic. And then we would come back and hopefully be able to take a motion and move this forward. So we will take a break. It is seven fifty eight. Let's just come back at, um, eight fifteen, please. Thank you.
All right, let's reconvene and I think that Alice was able to make her work her magic on the remaining changes that need to be made. And hopefully Superintendent will be able Superintendent Perry can pull it up again. And then um we will move to number five, which is to take action on this item to approve the Salem Kaiser Public Schools ideal profile for the next superintendent. Um if Alice, can you zoom out so we can see the document in total? Well, oh, and then folks should be able to zoom in. If if Alice has the full document shown, then you should be able to zoom in on Zoom to see the pieces that you want to see. Does that work?
Yeah, and there were a couple things that she needed to rearrange, so I would like you to look carefully um at it to be sure that you're happy with. I'm going to get the track changes screen off too, just so it's a little easier to.
And and if you cut, if you cut or minimize the font in that opening paragraph, that might be useful.
Let's see. What's everyone's preference? Do you want to have Alice zoom in and we can all take some time to read it? While she slowly scrolls through, or do you want to take care of zooming on Zoom? In on the pieces.
I can leave it right where it is right now. I can I can read it without my readers on, so I would be good if everybody else is.
Okay.
And Christie has it on Zoom. I'm working in the background.
Okay. Wow, you are good, Alice.
I thought the same thing.
Thank you.
Alice and I have done this so long together. I write, she edits on the other side.
Happy to help. It's a great partnership.
Is everyone done reading? Um, let me know if you need more time. You see Director Hain as a question. Just want to make sure everyone's done reading before she asks her question. Or comment. Okay, I'm not hearing anyone. Speak? Okay, Director Hain.
I just have a word swap, if it makes sense to everybody else. Uh, on the um, the first bullet after and who instead of which values and includes to me. I like better which includes and values, and I don't know what other people's opinions are, you know, maybe I'm just being weird here. I'm not sure.
I'm fine with that either way. Director Guzman Ortiz.
I'm tired of wordsmithing and um on that first and who I noticed we have stakeholders. I thought we had replaced that and I was hoping that we could. Um, I know that there's been discussions around the word use and just kind of.
Um, yeah, I think we had a version control issue maybe so um, I think I had replaced it with community.
Yes, so that was one. And then on this. Oh, I lost it. Um, the third bullet from there fosters culture where all students and all staff. I guess it just felt a little redundant to say all students and all staff. And wondering if we could just say where students and staff including um. But it's just kind of a, I guess as I was reading the flow of it felt somewhat redundant.
Yeah, I'm I'm fine with those changes if everyone else is. All right, other comments. Okay. Then I would accept a motion.
I motion that we vote pass this new superintendent criteria.
I feel like we we have to have a specific motion if I'm remembering I'm looking.
Um, yes.
Alice, you had I it's I don't see it in my agenda, though.
It's okay. It's actually under on the um the action item itself, you need to move to approve the Salem Kaiser Public Schools ideal profile for next superintendent. So the title of it.
Okay, so Director Avila.
My second.
Moves to approve the Salem Kaiser Public Schools ideal profile for the next superintendent. And
I second it.
Director Shanju Gary seconds the motion. And is there any further discussion before we vote? All right, hearing none. Um, all those in favor. Say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
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 Okay, do we have everyone? It's hard to I can't see my whole screen. I think I saw all directors say aye and their hand raised, so the outcome is a unanimous approval of the ideal profile for the next superintendent. Yay. Wonderful news. Thank you so much for working through this process and to the community for weighing in. This is so important um that we get the right pool of candidates and are able to select an amazing superintendent. Um, I will now um turn it over to Hank Harris again for the next part of our meeting, which is a discussion on the compensation for the next superintendent. And so take it away, Hank.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chair. Um, but I also I have to just say, Board, that was um, that was a really great conversation and sometimes wordsmithing can get tedious and maybe at times it maybe it felt a little bit, but I have to say it was um really exceptional work. And engaged and uh I'm just really pleased with um. You know, sometimes I think people think that I want to come in with an ideal profile and I want you to accept it as is, and I really don't like I want you to own it. And um, and you're owning this, and this, I think, is a much better document that we started the night with. So thank you for for making it what it is and um, congrats. And so we are, we're going to talk about compensation in a moment. I want to um, just add if I can one or two quick pieces. We are moving after tonight. Now, now with this document that you just approved, we are ready to open your vacancy window, which is uh coming up next week. It's um December 5th. And so uh Kathleen and I will go quite, you won't hear a lot from us over Christmas or winter break, I'm sorry, um, which is just as well. We'll be actively recruiting um candidates, working with them, discussing how great Salem Kaiser is. And uh you won't see us again until January. I want to remind you of two agreements that you made when we started this and Director Salazar, you weren't here for that, so you're hearing it for the first time. There will be um, there will likely be candidates who might reach out to you directly. Um, they might want to ask you questions. They might want to go out for coffee with you. Um, and while that's gracious of them to do that, that's not something that we want to do as board members. And we talked about this way back when we started, because if you have coffee with one person, it kind of means you have to have coffee with everybody and that's not how how we want to operate. So if a candidate reaches out to you at any point in the process and says, hey, I know you're on the board, I'm interested in the job. Please thank them and refer them to Kathleen and or myself. Um, our emails are prominent. You can give them our email address. You could just go to the Salem Kaiser web. It's not hard for them to find us. Um, so please remember to do that. Do not engage in conversations with candidates and um, you will also almost certainly be approached by people who are not candidates, but want you to know that their friend, colleague, or somebody they think is amazing is applying and similar rules apply. So if they say, hey, I just want to tell you about this great candidate who's applying from wherever. Just direct that person to us. Do not get into those conversations for the same reason, right? It gives somebody a leg up, whereas it doesn't give other people a leg up. Um, and if there is a candidate that you would like Kathleen and myself to reach out to. You you can tell us that. You can say, hey, I've heard there's a great candidate in District X. Would you look into it? You can do that, and you can do that just by emailing us directly. We're not going to say anything other than, okay, thank you, but we will. We will look into that, and that would be true for any board director, but it would be true for really any anybody. And that's how we do this work is through not only our network, but through the networks of others. So any questions on what I just said? Okay, fabulous, wonderful. Thank you, Board. Let's uh, let's go to what I think is the last agenda item of the night, which is the compensation for the next superintendent. Um, so are we able to, we can probably only pull up one document at a time, right? It's probably the best we can do. So let's pull up. Um, bear with me one moment, please. It's addendum. I'd like to start with the addendums. Um, can we open Addendum A, please? So this would would say contract analysis at the top in a big black box. Oh, oh, great. Thank you, Alice. I knew I knew that. I'm sorry. They're all on one PDF because you magically put them all together.
Yeah, I've got it, so.
Thank you. This is great. So the order that we're doing, since you're doing the page turning uh superintendent pairs, we'll start with the then A, then we'll go to B, and then we'll go back to the cover letter at the end. Okay, um, and if we could zoom in just a little bit more, because it's the top half of the page is probably that's so that we can see up through a little farther out. I want to see the top, and I also want to see the gray bands. So can you zoom back at that? That that looks good, Directors. Hopefully you can see that. So I first want to walk through the data. Um, and just make sure it all makes sense. And so we'll start with me explaining the data and asking for any sort of clarification questions that we'll do that with the first two slides. And then on the third slide where you see a recommendation, then we'll have more of a conversation about what you think about it. But to in order to think about it, we got to understand what the data is saying. Um, so let me walk through this, and some of you are more and some of you are maybe less familiar with how salaries work. In Oregon, I think you all have some degree of understanding, but I don't want to leave anybody out. So um what you are looking at here is the is what is happening in what's happening in the market? And we're going to define the market in this slide as the nine, the nine other largest. It's the top 10 districts in this in the state in terms of superintendent salary, removing Salem Kaiser from that. So from one to 10 in rank order, you'll see the uh you'll see the districts that are the comparator districts and their student population. Uh, I believe that's last year's student population data, so it may be slightly different, but in general, um in general, it's 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 workable for our purposes today. Um, okay, so when we compare those nine districts against each other. And this part you probably all know, but I'll just say that for the good of the order in Oregon. We have three large school districts that all are kind of around the same size and have been for many years, which is Portland, Beaverton, and Salem. And then there's a steep drop as we get to number four through 10 and even further down, and you see that. So Portland Salem Salem's size is not on this list, but you know what that is. So Portland, Beaverton, Salem are all kind of Salem Kaiser are all in that height level and then drops down precipitously when we get to number four. So those are the comparators. Let's go to those gray bars.
Hank, um Director Hain, Hain has her hand up.
Yes, I'm sorry. I didn't see that.
Thank you. Uh, what is district paid TSA?
Yeah, let me, I'm going to get there in just two seconds.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. So when we get to those bars, uh, you can see that there are um there are the, there are three bars which are the lowest of. So I mean to state perhaps the obvious, the lowest comparison is whichever of those 10 falls. To state perhaps the obvious, the lowest comparison is whichever of those 10 falls lowest in terms of salary. Uh, the highest and the average of the comparators, and then you're looking at it against the current. Compensation package for Salem Kaiser Superintendent. And so let's, uh, as, as Director Hine just asked, let's sort of walk across what that looks like. The per suggested salary, you, you may very well know that, uh, in some districts, the employee. Pays their, in most districts, I think the employee pays their own, um. I'm not sure that's true anymore, so forget that I just said that. But in some districts, the employee pays their own, it's six and a half percent, and in other districts. The employer pays that six and a half percent. So in order to make sure when we compare Oregon salaries. We always, we have that per suggested salary where a district that. Is paying it and a district that isn't paying it, we can look at numbers that are apples to apples. And so that's where you see the per's adjustment. Um, and you'll see that in Salem Kaiser because the employee pays her own, um. I'm not going to say that because I think, I, I think I'm going to say the wrong thing, but at any rate, we're adjusting for PERS. Um, then you're seeing across the board, there are some other, uh, there are some other items that often find themselves in superintendent contracts. The district, uh, paid TSA is the tax sheltered annuity. It's a contribution to insurance plans, retirement insurance above and beyond PERS, and it's very standard. Uh, for a school board to, um. Add a TSA package for superintendents, uh, particularly in, in districts of size. So certainly if you look at other districts, um. That have thirty-nine, forty thousand, but even districts fifteen, twenty thousand often. Uh, will have a contribution toward the TSA. Toward the tax shelter now, do it. And then you're seeing a couple of other comp pieces, um, tech. And then that column, other comp is a catch-all, and sometimes those are quite large and sometimes those are quite small. Um, one of the places where you see sometimes a, a large compensation piece is. And you have to look at each contract, so that's why it's a catch-all, but sometimes folks have, uh, longevity. Um, payments, so if you stick around for three years or five years, the board will give a certain amount of additional compensation. There's various things that can fall into that. There's also the total, so the, the next column is the total compensation, that's salary plus all those other pieces. Um, that figure into total compensation, so you're seeing that in the second to last column. And, um. And then in the very last column, total compensation with vacation. So you may or may not know that in many superintendent contracts. There is, um, the right to purchase back vacation days, meaning that. A contract would of course afford a superintendent X number of vacation days. Because of the very, very busy and intense nature of the work of the superintendency. It's not uncommon for a superintendent to not take all of his or her, her vacation days. And in many contracts, there is the opportunity then, if I don't take. Five days or seven days, because I'm working through them. Can I get paid for those five or seven days that I'm working? Um, and in many superintendent contracts, there is the opportunity, usually there's a capped amount of vacation days. So, okay, as part of your contract, each year you can cash out whatever, five, seven, ten, twelve vacation days, whatever are the specifics. And because there is a, uh, a value, a dollar value associated with that, that's where you see, um, the difference between those. Two last columns. So I want to pause and make, and answer any questions about clarification, I want to make sure this data makes sense to you. Uh, I would say the key numbers you're looking at are column, the salary column. And the compens, the total comp and total comp with vacation columns. Are there any questions or clarifications I can offer? I'm not necessarily going to see hands, so.
Director Shandugary?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, this is for what year's salary range is it? Uh, is this the older one or is it the current one? Because, uh. Competitive and get a good superintendent, you know, that's what I'm thinking.
Director Shandugary, I'm, I'm not sure I understood the question, is it what, what is the, what is the year from which? Tracks are drawn, it's the cur, it's the current year, it's twenty, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-three.
Has it been adjusted for the current? Uh, market rate nationally or within the state? Or is it outdated? That's what I was not clear.
So right, what we're looking at, I, I want to make sure I'm understanding your question, is, is. A comparison of current year superintendent contracts from these 10 districts. Was, did I answer that? Did I answer your question?
You did. And can I ask you just a follow-up question? Now, if we were to compare this with, say. Nationally or Pacific Northwest for a similar sized district, how does it compare? How do? Compared to others?
I am going to speak to that if you would, if you would let, if you would. Not mind if we wait till we got to that third page and I can speak to sort of regional numbers. Thank you so much, Director Shandugary. Are there any other hands up? Okay. Let's go if we can to addendum B. So this is a very similar document, um, but it's looking only at the top four. Really, it's the top three because Salem is one of the top, Salem Kaiser is one of the top four. So it's looking at our three closest comparators. Recognize if you will that two of the comparators, Portland and Beaverton are much closer in size. Uh, and scope of work than the fourth district. And so this, uh. This gives you a little bit of a, sort of a zooming in. On, on the closest market comparators, which are these three districts. Now I want you to notice, although this, this, this document intentionally does not state which district has which, um, salary. You might be able to intuit which district is the lowest comparator. And you can certainly see Salem's and you, you probably could wager a guess of what the highest comparison district is. Any questions on this? Okay. I'm, I'm assuming there's no hands raised? Okay, so let's go if we can to the first slide, which is. Our recommendation. Uh, and you're going to see that in the bottom, and while you're looking at that number, I want to. I want to say what I, what I think and hope I said when we talk about the ideal profile, which is. Our job as consultants is to bring you our best thinking, um, of. What you need to do to make effective decisions. And we did that with the ideal profile, we said. This is what we think is best and then you, in your wisdom, do as you will. And so similar, I want to take a similar approach to compensation. Um, we recommend this, uh, these goalposts. Um, as your general compensation, but when you think about what you might pay your next superintendent. Um, I'm going to use this word goalposts a few times in my, in my talking points. Uh, this is what we recommend. Um, if we are mindful board that. Your pocketbooks, your, and the money that you steward is your responsibility and all we can do is give you our best thinking. So tonight, what we'd like to do is have you engage in a conversation. Uh, with each other as much as with us about. About these numbers and about what you feel comfortable paying your next superintendent. Now, our outcome tonight at the end of the night is not to take action on any dollar figure, we're not doing that tonight. What we're doing tonight, rather, is you, in your conversation, are going to illuminate for Kathleen and myself. Where you each stand as board members on this. You're not actually going to approve a dollar figure for your next superintendent until the end of this process. When hopefully you land on an individual that you think is fabulous and there is a process, uh, which we'll talk about at a later point. Where you actually create that contract. That's not what you're doing tonight. Tonight, you're engaging in a conversation with each other about. What do we think? What are we comfortable with? Uh, we want to be prudent and we want to be good financial stewards and we also want to make sure we attract. Great folks and pay them commensurate to what superintendents ought to be making and treat them fairly and all of those things that you think about. When you think about something as essential as. What are we paying someone? So with that said, I would like to, um. Ask you to converse with each other and or to ask us questions about, um, what you see here. And just take a little time to converse about it. When we, when that conversation wraps up, I'm going to ask if each board member. Because we're not taking action as a group tonight, at the end of our conversation, I'm going to ask each board member to. Share their thoughts, their individual thoughts on where their comfort level is with respect to, um. To salary compensation. Uh, I might ask the chair if you'll be willing to call people, because I, I don't see hands, I only see one person at a time.
Okay, yeah, no problem.
Didn't mind doing that.
Um, Director Shandugary?
Hank, I'm going to go back to the question I asked.
Yeah, thank you.
Because to come up with that kind of, uh. How do we stand? Do we kind of do it locally within our sailor, Oregon? Or do we think in terms of nationally or think regionally, so to.
The second time and I, I apologize that I didn't speak to it just now, so now I will speak to it. So Oregon is, uh, is not a top paying, uh, state in general when it comes to superintendents. And we are, on both sides of us, to the north in Washington, to the south in California, we are really behind them, noticeably behind them. So it is as, as recruiters who do a lot of our work, we primarily work in Oregon and Washington and Oregon is where our heart is. And I can tell you from experience, it is very difficult to attract, um, superintendents of like-sized districts. From California or Washington to come to Oregon. It might not be so hard to, uh, attract a superintendent of a small Washington or a small California district. In terms of salary to a large Oregon district, but in terms of. What is a Salem Kaiser sized district in Oregon pay versus one in California versus one in Washington considerably less? Um, so when we think about, you know, our closest, maybe like districts would probably be up in Clark County, Washington. In Vancouver and Evergreen, which are both sizable districts, uh, they are, they are in terms of, um. They are above this. Uh, last time I checked in the high three hundreds, um. In terms of salary and I can double check that, um, and total comp in the low four for sure. Um, but if you look across Washington State, you see a lot of school superintendents. Paid in the three thirty to three sixty range in districts that are not as large or as, or as complex. As Salem Kaiser and true as well in California. California is a bit more regional. So if you're in the Bay Area, you're in the LA area, you're going to see some really high salaries if you're. If you're not, um, Del Norte County, which is, you know. If you know where that is, that's the far northwest part of the state of California, but it's a really small district too. So you're seeing a challenge for us to be attracted to those kind of states. Now, there are other states that are commensurate with Oregon. Or that pay less than Oregon. So, um. Idaho, uh, Alaska, uh, Wyoming. Um, are states that typically pay less. Colorado is a state that's kind of on par and so. Um, you do see superintendents come from Califor, Colorado and come to Oregon, um, that seems to happen. Uh, and then as you move farther east, you have really a diversity of kind of pay, it's, it's, um. New York, Connecticut, Massachusetts, higher, some of the southern states lower, and it's not always exactly like that. But that's kind of what we're looking at when we're trying to attract candidates to Oregon.
I'm muted, Director Hyun.
Thank you, I guess I would hope the, you know. That a potential candidate would look at the entire picture. Certainly, New York and the cost of living there. You know, what is fifty thousand a year is that like minimum wage in New York? I mean, it's just a lot different and even California, I think is a lot different. Um, I'm not sure about, uh, Washington State, Oregon's not cheap, that's for sure, but, um. You know, just some of the different districts, uh, that it, it's not really comparable just because of the cost of living and, and everything. And currently no sales tax, sort of, except for the cat tax. Uh, and then, um. Also, I would hope that we could sell some of the things about Oregon, you know, these people aren't from Oregon. I mean, we got. You know, an hour, ninety minutes to the, to the ocean. And this, you know, and the same thing to, to the snow, to the mountains and skiing. We have so much to offer for anybody who loves the outdoors. That, you know, hopefully we can attract somebody with more than just a number, but kind of the whole package. I find the four twenty-five kind of shocking, um, because I know PERS is forever. And, you know, that, it's going to get pretty expensive and I'm concerned about an economic downturn and. You know, we've already got people struggling as employees, you know, with. You know, the inflation and everything, it just, it's just a little scary for me.
Thank you. We don't want them skiing and going to the beach, or even working, you know, I'm just kidding.
Well, they can have five days to do that, right? Buy it back.
You know, I, I would, I would, I would echo what she had to say because, uh. When we were recruiting teachers and we go into these, go into California, especially, especially our bilingual teachers. Is quality of life in Oregon is what we emphasized. And we did pull some people out of that, just with that. I think, you know, some administrators might have that same thought.
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just, and it's not my, it's really not my place to argue, so I don't want to argue, but I, I do want to share as somebody who. Moved from the East Coast to Oregon and loves Oregon more than any other place, I. I always thought I could, I could just sell people on how great we are in Oregon and I think there is some. I mean, that's what we do as recruiters, I mean, we're out there selling how great it is. Um, and at the same time, when people start saying I have to take a thirty or forty thousand dollar pay cut. You know, and they're not, they're not dumb, they're going to look at housing prices and maybe housing prices offset that a little bit, but it is still kind of a tough swallow for a lot of folks. Maybe a five thousand dollar pay cut, not so much, but a thirty, forty. In my experience is, um. So I'll just put that out there and then, now I'll be quiet.
I'm just saying, then you have to tell them about seasonal depression.
That's not in the marketing for sure.
You can buy them a lamp, they make special lamps for that.
We'll include that in the compensation.
Yeah, we'll put it in a special category.
Director Shandugary?
Well, I'm not going to talk about lamp today because it'll be a medical advice. So I don't want. Somebody come. Now, I am going to think differently, I'm not going to agree on the dollar rest like today is not the day. But I really think we should. Aim at a higher level. Because I've seen our superintendent Perry work, this is a very complex district. Just because you summarize thirteen thousand, uh, sorry, thirteen hundred interviews, there's a lot of work needs to be done. And we really want to jumpstart and get our district to a very good position to be at a national level. So I'm really thinking, how do we make it attractive? I mean, ski resort and all is great, please include all that in the budget, you can even include. Vineyards of the, yeah, Salem, Yam Hill, Willamette Vineyard, all that is fine. At the end of the day, we want somebody. You know, we want to attract excellent candidates, preferably someone coming from outside and thinking outside the box and jumping start. This is an investment on our children, that's how I see. And we have thirty-nine thousand kids. I mean, superintendent is like the gatekeeper for. Education for our children, we come with that hope to this country, so we want the best. Uh, to be the gatekeeper who can think innovative, think of global perspective and cutting edge and get our. Uh, district to grow. I mean, it's fine, we can essentially poach from a smaller district in Oregon and bring them here or do all those things. That's like raw Peter Pay Paul, but the reality is we really want to jumpstart. And for that, we have to respect their contribution. The amount of work they need to do and the challenge we are talking about. Uh, thing, so I really think we need to compensate well, like we need to really compensate our teachers well and the staff well. But at least we have only one employee. And we really want to get ourselves at a global stage or a national stage, so if it takes. Being one of the highest in the state of Oregon to attract somebody along with the wine bottle or ski resort or. Sad lamp, seasonal affected sort of lamp, whatever. sad lamp, seasonal affected sort of lamp, whatever it takes. But that's how I see. There's a lot of work. There's a lot of challenges. And I don't want it us to be very naive in selling it and then say we wish we had not gone. We really want to infuse something. So to me, I don't see this salary as competitive enough to attract from a national level. So what would it take for us to be at least attractive from a national level is what I would ask our board to consider, please. This is one time, one opportunity we have to take us there. So dollar amount, I don't know the answer. So, but at least start thinking that way.
Um, Director Salazar.
Where did our current superintendent come from? Twenty miles down the road?
Yes.
Especially if we have competent people in the state of Oregon that could meet that need. If we have to go national and somebody wants to come in at the rate that we're paying, we would maybe make it a little more uh, you know, uh, valid for them. But I think uh, there are good people in Oregon or maybe even the Northwest that would uh, would uh, be uh, uh, sensitized to come to Salem Kaiser without us having to uh, give it, give it a price. I think, yes, I think you go with the highest prices that I see here for total compensation. But I don't see us exceeding that for someone that uh, would come from the East Coast or from the South or South California. Because I think that the people that do, that are here are, are some good people too that we can find with, within the state or the Northwest.
Thank you. Student advisor McDonald.
Yeah, this is kind of uh, both a comment and a question, but just thinking about how maybe the best superintendent for our district might also be the best superintendent for another district. And so if we are competing um, to really think about making sure we have a competitive um, salary and because I mean, the, the twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars that we might choose to get the best superintendent might, out there might bring us a superintendent who's not going to make decisions that might end up losing our district money or wasting our district's money. So um, this is a really important investment. And then also kind of a question I have for Hank, and I don't know how, if you are privy to this information or if you can share it, but do we know if there are other superintendent, superintendent searches or higher profile superintendent searches for bigger districts going on in the Northwest in the nation that we might be actively competing for? Or is that, we're doing that now?
Yeah, so um, so the, we are, we are toward the front end of superintendent searches for the current year. And when I say toward the front end, you're starting to see searches open in the next few weeks and we're kind of, we're ready to go next week. So we're not like miles ahead, but we're at the front end. And the reason I say that is when we get to the point, when you get to the point that you're going to be selecting and appointing, you're still going to be a little bit of the front end, but there are other districts out there that um, that are looking. Um, and some will be, some will, some are actually, there are a few that are, a small few that are actually already in hiring. The biggest district in Minnesota is at their, which is a, is a district you might not have heard of called Anoka Hennepin, if I'm pronouncing it right, but it's the area around Minneapolis, St. Paul, and they've, they've just announced their finalists. Um, Bellevue, Washington, the North uh, just went to semifinals. Those are the super early districts. Um, you're in the kind of the early districts and you're kind of toward the front end of the early. But I think that's a really good point too. When you, we get to um, that period of time where you have your final interviews and you're ready to move forward, it is not uncommon for some of those candidates to be in more than one search and particularly if they're of great talent. Um, so, but their, their choice about whether to even put their name in the hat or not will somewhat be informed by this. I don't want to, I don't want to presume, nor do we want to appeal to candidates who are only looking at the dollar figure, right? That's not who we're looking for. But a person of great talent who sees, is looking at a few different districts and some pay considerably less and some pay considerably more, you know, humans as humans are probably will be more attracted to the ones that are on the higher side of things. I don't, did I fully answer your question? Um, there's a lot of, there's a lot of districts that are right now beginning their search process um, across the country, and I certainly don't know all of them, but this is the time of the year when that starts to happen.
Yeah, you did a good job. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, I'm going to do a quick time check here. We're at eight fifty-seven. Um, we need to wrap up very soon for interpreting um, simultaneous interpreters. Um, so let's go to Director Avila.
Uh, thank you. Um, Hank, is there any information and consideration that we should be looking at in terms of budget in comparison to these other comparable sized districts? Um, you know, because I'm, I'm considering really quickly, you know, Los Angeles Unified School District, which their new superintendent is getting paid four hundred and forty thousand dollars. With, he has five hundred and twenty-two thousand more kids, they're students. And a budget, it's also eleven thou- eleven point billion or eleven billion more, a bigger of a budget. So a difference of minimum a hundred thousand to a hundred and forty thousand that we would be willing to offer for the, these large differences. I know we want to pay a superintendent, everybody a little bit more, but I want to take in consideration the budget of these comparable sized districts as well.
I, you know, that's a fair, it's, it's a fair point. It's a fair point to look, and I'm not familiar with, with the LAUSD super salary, but it sounds like you are. And it's, it's a fair point to say that. And so that I would say, think about that, but then I would also say this. If you were to accept this recommendation at three hundred to three forty salary and if this person came in, let's just say they came in at the top of three forty. They would still be the third highest paid superintendent in Oregon. So that's another way to think about it too, right? I mean, that's, and both of those are a fair frame of references for you to be thinking through as you think about how you want to land on this.
Yeah, thank you.
Director Guzman Ortiz.
I just wanted to throw my pitch since I know Hank said he wanted to hear from us all. So um, for this one, I, I know that there's been kind of dialogue around attracting candidates from outside of the state and I've said it before, but I'll say it again about my strong preference for someone who is a resident of Oregon who has like strong leadership background also within our state. Um, I do kind of just, I guess in, in mind, thinking if these are numbers from the twenty twenty one, twenty-two numbers considering inflation, like increased in housing, you know, market prices and all of that. So um, just kind of wanted to name it because those are the numbers that we're looking at and those are perhaps comparably what we're comparing with. Um, but just recognizing that there has kind of been an influx and a growth there. And then we mentioned, um, when I was here in vacation, I guess I'm just going to make my initial pitch to writing in requiring vacation days into our contract, wanting to model um, leaders to be, you know, take care of themselves and that will be. I know we wrote that into um, our ideal candidate description earlier, so just wanted to call that out. And the fourth largest district on this list, at least I, if I'm not mistaken, is opening up a superintendent search as well. So like that one just popped up to me because, you know, they're pretty high up there. So I just to um, our student advisors comments about the competitiveness and who else is kind of looking for awesome candidates.
You're spot on. Thank you for, for mentioning that district. And the other thing I want to mention, if I can just quickly point, say any, because you were talking about the years and I think that's a really important that we look at this. We're looking at current year contracts, so twenty-two, twenty-three, which were written at, in the spring or sooner. And although you're looking at twenty-two, twenty-three contracts, you're going to write a contract for twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. So if that makes sense, by the time you hire your new superintendent, this data is kind of obsolete because we're, we're already in a new school year. So factor that in as well. So thank you for, for raising that.
Director Shonda Carey.
Well, there's also been, uh, you know, I was attending the workshop Superintendent Perry and Dr. Sprouls gave. So I, if I remember the numbers, maybe Christie can help us. This is like seventy, eighty percent of the superintendent turnover. So there's a lot of people moving back and forth and a lot of changes. So um, how that will factor in, in terms of how do we attract the best is also something I just wanted to throw that open because everybody is looking for a superintendent's position. And how can we be competitive? Not just by salary, but by other things in the US.
More board dynamic is significant.
Hmm. All those things will matter when it comes to attracting. So.
Yeah. So I have a couple. Paul, I'll come to you. I just want to give my perspective really quick unless. Okay, he seems okay with that. So, thank you for doing this analysis, um, Hank and Kathleen. Just a couple of things. I think we obviously want to recruit someone amazing, um, and we want to be competitive. It does seem um, like the numbers are shocking, um, I think to all of us. Um, I, having the state worker experience and understanding the compensation for state government, living in Salem, I am you know, thinking about things like what the salaries are for the heads of the major agencies like DHS, OHA, ODOT, um, like the highest paid executives in Salem. And those ranges are usually anywhere from like starting one sixty to two eighty at year ten or eleven. And so it is hard for me a little bit to digest, not because I don't want to pay someone this, but because we're hearing so much about a potential recession. Um, you know, we're thinking about the state school fund and the budget in total and how much strain and all the things we need to fund. And so you, I do think we have to make difficult choices and, you know, I would love to pay people definitely what they're worth and beyond. But I, I do just, I am just genuinely curious about like, how did we get to a point where all superintendents are making this amount? Not because I don't think they deserve it, but when I look at what state agency um, comparators are, it's pretty dramatically different for what I would consider much larger budgets, more employees. Um, it's a different world, but it just, it's just shocking to me. Um, and so I have to raise that. I would love to see the range go slightly below what our current superintendent makes. Um, that's just one of those things that really bothers me when someone's worked in the position for a decade and then we're starting the next person higher than that person. But I mean, just like not even thinking about starting them lower. So I would just love to see it bumped down to like maybe two eighty up to three forty. Um, and the adjustment on the total compensation, but obviously all this will be a negotiation and again, I don't want to convey that I don't think any of these amazing people aren't worth that amount. It's just thinking big picture, state budget, state school fund, all of those things. Um, Mr. Decapolis.
Thank you. Just a couple of points and I really appreciate the conversation. Having been involved in um, all of the superintendent contracts, or at least the last five uh, for this district. Um, it's notable that every time we have had a national surge, uh, we've had um, candidates that the boards, that, that our board has been interested in that have their hat in the ring with at least one other district and sometimes two. So I think you should go into this expecting that if you haven't, if you're going to do a national search, uh, these are people that are going to be looking uh, at other districts as well. And that's, that's certainly been the case for Salem Kaiser. Um, and so just, just take that for what it's worth. That will happen. Next, I think, uh, because I work with other school districts as well and including some on this list, um, I think the, the, the market for superintendents is tighter now because it's the harder job than it was three years ago. It just is. Um, you ask any superintendent, um, i- is this the hardest time in your whole career? And they'd all say yes. And so the, the market forces will um, will recognize that. Um, so that's my two cents.
Thank you for that. Well. Hank, do you have final questions for us or?
Yeah, I, I do. And I know there's an interest in, in bringing the meeting to um, fruition. So I, here's what I'd like to do and um, and Chair Carson Cotttingham, maybe you can tell me if you think this will work now or if we should do something at our next board meeting. But what I would, here's what I would ask. And, and tell me if you think the board is ready to do this and has time to do this. I would like to hear from each board member um, just very succinctly and briefly, like maybe even less than a sentence of what, what they are comfortable in numerically with either salary or total comp or both. To give Kathleen and I some goalposts so that we can begin conversations with um, with candidates as early as next week. If we feel that we could do that right now, I would love that. If we feel that we can't do that, we want to think about it a little bit and come back to it at your next board meeting as a very short agenda item, I think we could do that too. What we're looking for really is just some talking points so that we know what we can and can't say when we enter conversations with candidates about, about the comp piece.
Director Hyun.
Uh, thank you. Uh, so one thing that would probably help me is to get a refresher on uh, Superintendent Perry's uh, current salary and her current total compensation package and, and the different pieces of it. Just, just to look at that to start would, would help me.
That's right in the, that was what he pulled up. Yeah, so on addendum.
So we can pull it back up again so I can see it again. That would help.
Right, the districts to Salem Kaiser grave are under.
Ninety-nine zero eight zero is the current salary.
And then total comp is three sixty-five, seven ninety-five.
Alright. I, I kind of agree with you, uh, Chair Carson Cotttingham, that, you know, starting, at least the starting number lower than the current superintendent. That does not necessarily mean, that's what we hire them at. It depends on experience and everything else, right? But to, to start that range lower, so it can be somewhere in there.
Um, Director Shonda Gary.
I, I would say to be competitive and considering everything else, the cost of housing in Salem, et cetera, uh, and the complexity of what we are facing. Four hundred thousand uh, total comp is a good starting number uh, to make ourselves comparable, competitive. I mean, ideally we should go for the highest number, but that would be my stay. Since the next board meeting, I won't be here in the country, so I just want to throw that number.
So Director Shonda Gary, do you mean the top of the total comp?
Yeah, total compensation.
Lower it to four hundred or keep it at four twenty-five for them going out?
Well, the top of the compensation, it says four hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Anywhere from four hundred thousand onwards, we can start looking for, depending on the experience. Uh, because we really have to factor in the cost of housing. There's hardly any, I mean, housing in this time purchasing a home, moving to this place and then for us to be competitive if they are looking elsewhere.
That's, that's helpful for me that.
Okay.
Thank you, yeah.
Director Hyun, do you have recommendations on the numbers?
Well, I have just an additional comment. And I know when we were talking about different races for Superintendent Perry over the years, you know, sometimes it's advantageous to do more of the deferred comp, you know, instead of the bigger salary increase because pers is forever. And I think that, that is my biggest concern. And so if we can have the salary maybe a little lower and do the benefits that we don't pay pers on forever higher to, to get to a total compensation that, that is competitive would be good.
When they start here, will they be tier three first or they will move their purse from somewhere else? I'm not sure about.
Tier one hundred and three, I think, but.
It would depend who it is. We have to get the, the consensus, or I mean, the input from other directors. Director Guzman Ortiz.
Uh, yes, I'm a little bit of on the fence, but.
perhaps comfortable with the high end of the total compensation being a four hundred on that higher end and kind of open, you know, flexible on the beginning salary piece. I know Chair, you mentioned kind of like that two eighty. I, I'm comfortable with the three hundred, but I think just someone looking at total compensation, even if it was just twenty-five, twenty-five thousand plus, like tapping it at that four hundred range, especially when we're looking at the top four districts sheet. All but one, and that is probably like the largest district are under that threshold.
Great. Thank you. Kathleen.
I just wanted to share an observation, and that is, it seems like I've been seeing, and Hank, you can, you can agree or disagree, but seeing boards that set a broader range maybe than we would have seen in the past. So another thing you might consider is if you want to move the bottom end lower, you could also move the top end higher, and that would allow you a lot of room for that negotiation with your new superintendent based on, you know, just what they're bringing, bringing to the, to the table.
That's interesting. Thank you. Director Avila.
Yeah, this is a, just to kind of give a broad, I guess, spectrum, I guess I would say probably capping off that high end around the four hundred thousand of the total compensation. I like the beginning of the salary there. I do hear your point, Ashley, in consideration and but also the, the state of we are with public education and superintendents that they have to deal with. At a, you know, like to deal with issues that we've never had to deal with. And that's also to say, board members are dealing with stuff that they've never had to deal with, and it's a different story, but. So I think the, the range there for me is the salary is fine, but lowering the total compensation down to about four hundred.
Director Salazar.
Yeah, I would agree with that, you know, keeping it at four hundred. And then I agree with Kathleen, you know, if we have a lower beginning salary or introduction, then that would give us more range in which to negotiate with the individuals. And also looking at some other things within the, the compensations that they might find are more negotiable to keep that, keep that amount down. But yeah, I, I agree also with Ashley, what you had to say regarding the, you know, the state budgets, the other things that we'll be having to deal with, and how much it's going to maybe affect other programs with that. And also the other salaries of the other administrators and teachers that we, we are looking at salaries for and how they are going to view the price of what we would pay for a new superintendent.
Okay, thank you. So I think I, I'm, I would like, yeah, between two eighty and three fifty for salary, I'd be good with. I like the idea of lowering a little and extending on the top end. And I'm completely fine with the total compensation between those amounts listed in your recommendation. Director Shonda Carey.
Yeah, I have a very quick take on that. If you're going to look for somebody with a multilingual, multicultural perspective and trying to lift that up, I really think one way to make it attractive is to pay at a very good rate, maybe total compensation, keep the salary low so they can put it under a different bucket one way or other. Because to me, it sends a very positive message to the community that you are going to start at the highest end with such expectation you want us to shift. So that would be one way to make it equitable because a lot of folks with, you know, if you're a multilingual immigrant, and you're also, it's really, you're simultaneously taking care of so many others in the family. So really, the carry home may not be the same as somebody else who doesn't have that minority tax burden. There's a term, I believe, that's what goes with it. But to make them, make it so attractive and welcoming, so we can attract somebody, say, from Los Angeles or somebody else from New Mexico or somewhere. That's the reason I was suggesting we need to pay them. Plus, we're thinking of expanding dual language immersion. It's a very important message we'll be sending.
Okay.
That's the reason I suggested keeping the higher end to make it attractive.
Okay. Did I get everybody? Okay, you have what you need, Hank?
I do. Thank you, board. Thank you very much.
Okay. So I want to remind everyone, the next board meeting is a regular business meeting. It will be on December thirteenth, Tuesday. And I will adjourn the meeting. It's nine seventeen PM. Thank you all for the great work tonight. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Bye-bye.